Welcome to the July 11th Planning Board Meeting. The first item of business is organizational component. We'd like to welcome Kathy Ryan as Planning Board Clerk. So I make a motion to appoint Catherine Ryan as Clerk of the Planning Board for fiscal year 2023 at the salary established by the 2023 Shelter Island Town Budgets. Take it down. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Next thing is to review the meeting minutes from last month, June 13th. As always, these minutes lists correspondents. We paid a handful of bills. We extended two resolution extensions, one for SH-29 Westneck and one for the White Bond, roadway bond. There were three public hearings, one for McCann Wetlands, one for Carpe, that was adjourned, and one for Chequid Avenue LLC, which is continued. And that's basically the meeting. Does anyone have any comments? Oh, yep, there's one correction. We adjourned the meeting at 9:48, not 7:51, so. So does anyone have any questions or comments? So I make a motion to accept the June 13th meeting minutes with the one correction of meeting adjourned at 9:48. All in favor? Second, and all favor?
I'll second.
We have a lot of correspondence this period, and I think instead of going through it more particularly, it is on the agenda, listed on the agenda, and there are copies in the back. Hopefully, that suffices for everyone. We have a handful of invoices to pay. First one is to the Times Review Media Group for the legal notice that we posted for, you say it's here, for the Weinstein-Hensley public hearing that we're going to hold tonight, totaled $57.93, something that's necessary. So I make a motion to accept the Times Review Media Group's invoice, again, $57.93. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? The next invoice we have is for the Reiner Group. We actually have four invoices coming up. And I do appreciate them breaking this down between Wetlands Reviews and White Subdivision Review. So this first one in front of me currently is for work in May on the White subdivision or the, more correctly, the road installation. It's for $536.25, so I think it's great to have Joe as our eyes and ears. And I make a motion to accept this invoice, $536.25, Reiner Group, for May.
Second.
Favor? Second one for the Reiner Group is, has some April and May components. This is for Wetlands applications. It totals $1,897.50. Deals with Lofus Hill, Chequid Avenue, McCann, Corpe, and then repeated Corpe, McCann's, and Chequid Avenue. Again, I think it's very helpful for these reports to be put together. So I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group's April-May invoice, $1,897.50. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Continuing on with the Reiner Group's invoice, now this is for June. Wetlands Reviews, the Weinstein-Hensley application, and the Dawson Diamond applications, total $660. And most of this was on the Weinstein-Hensley application, which we are going to have a public hearing on today, so this is helpful. I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group June invoice for $660. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The last one for the Reiner Group totaling $718.75, going back mostly for the White subdivision, the roadway status, completion status, and a little bit on 59 No Strain Parkway, that subdivision, potential subdivision we reviewed. So I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group's June invoice for $718.75. All in favor?
I'll second at first.
Second. We have one more invoice, and this is for Academy Printing Services, an amount of $160.25. I've been on the board for a long time. We've never had nameplates. We all have nameplates today, which is a nice step in the right direction. So I make a motion to accept the Academy Printing Services invoice for $160.25. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes care of our invoices. We have three extension resolutions. First is for the Blue Minor Subdivision. They had until the 10th of this month, so yesterday, but they did get a request in time to us and submitted the $105 extension fee. They're waiting on, in a couple of weeks, they were supposed to hear from the state and county regarding grants for their IA system. And they're also wanting to know, waiting until October to see if they can hook up to the Suffolk County Water Authority. So I think this is acceptable to give them the time to hear back before they may get pushed into Plan B. This gives them six months and goes until January 11th, 2024. So we want to make that one correction.
Oh, did I put 23?
Two.
Oh, I was living in the past. The wrong way.
Yeah.
It's right.
And is 23 the part of the?
I would just correct the last one. One or two others, maybe?
One about that, there is like a three sentences about, right? Oh. But then I'm not sure who to.
No, that one was.
No, I think it's just the last.
Prior, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then read the beginning of the sentence.
Yeah, that one's okay.
So I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 17 of 2023. It extends the final subdivision application filing until 11 July, January 2024. All in favor? Do I second, who's second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one we have is for SH-29 Westneck LLC and Robert Lipsey. This one is, we have cancer of sanitary credits, and we're waiting on the Health Department. They had their public hearing on, their order review hearing on April 20th. They still have not heard back. And so I think it's fair to wait for them for response from the Health Department. Everyone knows how slow they can be. This will extend the deed and file recordings to August 25th. So anyone have questions on this? All straightforward?
Yes. 45 days seems like a need.
Yeah, I mean, we are talking about the Health Department, so I don't really know. So I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 18 of 2023 for the SH-29 Westneck LLC and Robert Lipsey, bot line adjustment. Second, I have a second. All in favor? And our last extension has to deal with the Whites again. We have been giving them 45 days extensions for the roadway construction, which is apparently going slowly. I was going to give them one more. I'd also like to, when we distribute this, say this could potentially be the last one. We'd like them to get moving. They've had a very long time to do this. If they can show future reasonable concerns or explain why it's not going in, I will entertain it again, but for right now, I'd like to just give them a heads up, this could be the last. Anyone have any questions on this one? All right, so I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 19, 2023, for the conditional final approval for the subdivision of Nelson White Estate, and this would extend it again to August 25th. Do I have a second? A second? All in favor? And that close, now we have public hearings. We have two, one public hearing that's new, one that's a continuation, and two that are continuations. So the first is the Weinstein-Hensley Wetlands application. Christina, do you want to read the public notice?
Notice hereby given that the Shelter Island Town Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to Section 129-4E of the Code of the Town of Shelter Island at 7:00 PM prevailing time on July 11, 2023, in Shelter Island Town Hall, which time all interested parties shall be heard regarding an application for a wetlands permit by Robert Weinstein and Eric Hensley. The property, which is the subject of the application, is located at 28 South Midway Road, Shelter Island, New York, Suffolk County, tax map 700-19-1-7. The applicants are requesting a wetlands permit for renovation to an existing single-story dwelling, including construction of a new full foundation, with expansion downward, conversion of an enclosed porch and existing direct civilian space, construct a new roadside dormer, construction of a new swimming pool patio, well, and septic, alterations to roofline expanding upward, construction of deck with expansion outward, and new stairs and construction of a new 99-square-foot deck on the water side of dwelling, all within Wetlands regulated area. The subject application is available for review at the Office of the Planning Board and on the website, secret class type Q. There was correspondence of support received from Christopher Griffin, 41 South Midway Road, David Hoffman, Joan Fuddin, Nerandres, Nantil Lashen, and Gary Share, 26 South Midway Roads.
Great. I will say, we do not have the CAC report on this one right now, so we are going to keep it open, but Matt Sherman, the applicant's representative is here, and Matt, wouldn't you please walk us through the application?
Thank you. I thought that we were going to just recess it, so I don't have a.
Do you prefer to do so?
If we've got to keep it open for next month anyway, to have the.
The camera, sorry.
If we have to keep it open anyway, and we have to wait for CAC response so that we can address any of their concerns, then I'd like to do that. Yeah, I can walk you through a very brief description of it, but if I'm going to have to do the same thing again next month, I don't want to waste your time.
Might as well wait.
All right, so let's wait. I just wanted to give you the opportunity since you were in the room and.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so do I, we just state this is going to be continued.
Continued at the next.
On such matter.
Well, you would make a motion to.
So I make a motion to continue this application, the Weinstein and Hensley application, till next meeting, which is going to be August 15th. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Before we go into the next continuation, I just want to read this briefly. Last month, a formal complaint to the Board of Ethics was made against me due to my design involvement in a current application filed by a third party. Over the past few weeks, I've heard rumblings of my, claiming that my personal participation on the planning board is an ethical violation, as applicants who I have provided design services have become for the board. Last Sunday, I was accused of such in front of my family while out to lunch in a truly disgraceful display. In the process of transferring the wetlands review to the planning board, the town board carefully and thoroughly reviewed the process and dreaded my involvement as chairman of the planning board. I met with and was interviewed by the Board of Ethics. After their detailed review, they determined that, and I quote, "This board finds that Mr. McDonald adequately disclosed and recused himself in the matter of the Seven Chequid Avenue project." The town board and the Board of Ethics have seen that in small towns, the appearance of a conflict of interest cannot be avoided, and they have codified ethical standards for such instances. For those who do not know, the Code of Ethics is available online and easily accessible. So I must continue to recuse myself on this application as the.
Who will do the process first?
I'm sorry?
Carpe first.
Did we not do that Carpe? No.
Carpe is next.
You want me to come back to switch order or?
Whatever.
Okay, we can go Carpe. So, Carpe.
Man, my son is not present.
Hi, Quinn, how are you?
I'm well, how are you? Great.
We continue this from last month. You were going to come up with some new drawings, some new designs. We have seen some of the submission.
Excellent. Great. And also on the line is Victor Cunio, the project's architect as well. And so Ian, I know you had sent over a number of questions on the old plans. I believe many of them were answered in the new set of drawings, but happy to go through those questions one by one, if that's, if that's okay. Just going to share my screen here.
You need to share a screen?
Oh, you know, Christina, apologies. I just needed to quit and log back on in order to share my screen. Hey, sorry about that. So Ian, I know you had questions regarding, just the, I think the most concerning issue was the, the original set of plans had a new front porch added adjacent to this, to the garage that has been reduced to two steps and a stoop going into the house, which is a seven-by-three-and-a-half-foot stoop on the front porch of Bluestone. Any questions or issues there?
I'd like to thank you for providing the additional information. These are going to be Bluestone stoops set on a concrete masonry foundation, which is, I'll defer to the planning board. Again, theoretically, we're not supposed to accept any new expansion. It's a minor expansion, but it's also, in my mind, a safety issue to have a proper stoop. Now, it could be made out of wood, like your, I guess the rear stoop's going to be repeating on concrete piers. But I think one thing we talked about last, briefly last period, was about the driveway, which is all now a paved asphalt driveway. Are you removing that asphalt driveway and putting in?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. That's going to be, it's over 2900 square foot of asphalt that will be removed.
So I just want to, in my mind, this would be a nice trade off that I'd be willing to personally, but I'm, you know, leave it to the rest of the board to decide, too, that this is a possible gain, a huge gain in getting, recharging, recharging water going through a driveway and just for safety reasons, allowing these stoops. That was my own, anyone else?
That'd be good to make the driveway more permeable.
And so I thank you for reducing the size of that and giving us information on it.
Of course, of course. Secondly, there is an existing awning off of what is now going to be the kitchen. That's going to be removed with a pergola that'll be open to the below. You also had a question if that patio is going to be replaced. It will be also replaced with Bluestone as well.
And currently, it's a Bluestone patio over concrete face?
Early stone mortared together, but it's, it will be replaced with Bluestone.
Sand. It's on sand.
It's on sand and will be in sand?
On what?
And it will be in sand or?
It's just some of those stones are broken, so we just place those. I'm not going to.
Okay. That's a replacement in kind with, when there's a, when stones are set in sand, especially with Sanjo's joints, they are somewhat permeable.
Yeah.
So if we're maintaining a semi-permeable patio, okay?
Likewise, with the stairs back here on the side, they will be reduced in size from 4'2" by 5'2" to 4'5". So I know you had a question about whether or not those were going to be replaced, and the material will be Trex. I believe he also had a question regarding the stoop in the rear of the house. That's also going to be a Bluestone 12 and 1/2 by 3-foot stoop down off the sliding door there.
And again, I see this personally as a safety issue, and if the driveway's coming out, I have no real issue with that one.
Those were the biggest questions. You additionally, in the meeting, at last meeting, had a question regarding the storage of materials and parking. We did confirm with Rick Radigan, the builder, that the driveway area is going to be adequate for, for parking and the storage of materials. The, with the removal, there's a roundabout that will also come out and allow for additional parking. There will be no dumpster. It's going to be a daily removal of the waste there.
Rick maintains his own trucks, yeah.
Yes. And we will notify both the Duke Foster and Mr. Schrader, our neighbors on that block. The construction will commence, you know, in the off season when, where they're not frequenting those, their homes as much, so, but we'll be notifying them of the, of the The, another question you had was regarding the wire, silback fencing, the wire back fencing. Mr. Radigan did confirm that as well. And these plans also included the vegetation plan that was not included in the application last meeting. Not sure if you were able to take a look at that plan, but were there any, any issues or questions regarding the vegetative plan?
No issues, and it seems like materials that we, CAC typically requires. My only question was, we usually ask for a density of plantings, and the only way I could judge density on this is by using the different symbols and counting each plant. Is this, is that an adequate representation of what you are proposing here? Can I count these plants to different symbols and then expect to see them in, when you're done with the project?
I'd like to confirm that, but I'd defer to Christian on that question. If you wouldn't mind, I can confirm with him after the, after this meeting and email you with that, with that confirmation. I'm pretty sure that this is the layout.
I have the same question, actually.
Yeah, because, you know, we get sometimes these plans, I say such and such material here, but doesn't, we don't get explained the density or, you know, more, this is a, you know, this is, looks like it will be a nice layout, and just really want to be able. What we've, we are going to be implementing as, as we've taken over this from the town board, when a vegetation plan is submitted, at the, before you can get your certificate of occupancy, we send out an environmentalist who's familiar with the plantings to confirm that it was installed. But what we are asking to be, or what you offer to install has been installed and what we have approved. And then the only thing I like, I'm going to start repeating until I hear more of you guys talk about it, is I don't want to see the whole bed ripped out. I want to see the plants put into the existing grade without trying to create a new bed, which rips out all the existing root matter that's holding everything together. The idea is to augment that root matter and not start, start fresh. So hopefully, that's acceptable, too.
Because having been to the site, I was one of the ones who went through, I mean, it does have a really nice existing.
Yeah.
So we know, I wouldn't want to see, it has decent right now, so I don't want to see that come up.
Exactly.
Certainly.
Be by the water, not along the water.
And yeah, by the water, nothing is going to be touched. There would be additional plantings by the patio, but then on the, on the, on the roadside there, that right of way, that's just currently a lawn, so I believe the addition of these plantings will certainly improve the production of runoff.
It will, definitely, but it does slope down to the road, and if you strip out all the grass at once, and then you're just leaving dirt without any binding root matter in there. I saw this on one of my own projects and made me say, stop, we got to do better. And so I'd love to see the plants go in without ripping everything out first.
Understood, understood. Okay. We can confirm that with Christian.
Yeah. So do you go through a process of checking it?
Sure.
Sorry.
When you have a project, right, does the board, you just trust the homeowner that that's what's being done, right? Are you guys?
That's what has been done to date. Oh, I'm sorry.
Or pay.
Thank you.
Just for the record, pay.
That's what has been done today. We're implementing that the homeowner compensates, are designated, environmentalists come to confirm, and they will write a report that you've met the conditions of your vegetation plan, and, and then submit that to the building department, or that goes part of the record in the CO, closeout department.
So from what I gathered, those were the majority of the questions raised in the last meeting. Were there any additional?
I have two more, and one I asked last meeting about the foundation. Have you determined whether it can be, continued to be used, or are you planning to put a whole new foundation under the house?
We have, and actually Victor would probably be a bit better to speak to the, to the integrity of that. Victor?
Hello? Yes, yeah, the foundation is on the south.
Excuse me, can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, Victor Cunio, the architect for the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, the south portion looks like was an addition, and it's all poured concrete in good shape. The rest of it is block, which looks almost new. I mean, it's in, it's in great shape. So yeah, the foundation, the existing foundation will be reusing and utilizing that.
Great. What about the foundation underneath the covered porch, where you're doing an expansion to enclose portions of the existing covered porch? Uh, where you're doing an expansion to enclose portions of the existing covered porch? Right now there's a patio with a, with some kind of mainstream walls there.
Yes, uh, that we have to investigate. I'm showing portions of it being uh, replaced where we're adding new living space over it. Um, we haven't, I haven't dug down or, or had the contractor dig down to really confirm that it's a full foundation yet. But as of right now, I think that that should probably be replaced, but in, you know, in the same location.
Un- understood, understood. Just, we're just understanding, trying to understand the amount of um, excavation work that would actually be done around the house.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it. Just that one area there by the, the old porch, covered porch.
So it'd be there's something like the roof being supported and then you'll just take out the, what's below and then build the walls, the foundation and the wood, uh, walls underneath the existing roof. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, yeah.
Um. One thing uh, we asked before about was um, gutters and stormwater um, drywells. Uh, we, I don't see them on the original site plan or the new site plan. And um, but something we'll, we'll need uh, with calculations or just, you know, some uh, certain calculations about how many drywells you need. Where they're going to be, that kind of thing.
Okay, I think we were, we're possibly proposing to put them into the uh, the cistern that's existing. To try to avoid having to dig in new drywells. It's shown on the foundation plan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. I need it here.
The new foundation plan or the one we received last month?
Uh, the, the most recent one you just received.
That, does that have sufficient capacity to take the roof load?
Uh.
It's a ten thousand gallon.
It's a what?
It's a ten thousand gallon cistern. Uh, existing cistern.
Okay, I mean, uh, that sounds right. Um, I should be able to handle it. Can you just, can I, can you ask you to provide some calculations for it?
Yes, I can do that.
And uh, it, it is here on um, the existing first floor plan. There's the, the manhole off of the um, the existing steps. At the rear of the house.
And. Covers for two. You know, yeah. Uh, and you use the uh, cistern for irrigation or you, what are, what are you using the cistern for?
So that cistern has been in there for about forty years. Peter Larson put it in.
Okay.
And it was, when we got it, we, we um, didn't even know that it existed. And so that it was used at the time. There was an old irrigation system there.
Yeah. I mentioned it last time.
Then we just cap off the top gutters and never used it, but that's what the old homeowner.
Hey. Um. If it, or if you didn't maintain, I don't know if that, I, I don't know enough about the irrigation law that whether you can continue its use. Um.
I don't think you, I think you can use it, can you, can you use it as for um, your outdoor uh, spigots? For your, for water?
Yeah, that's good. I'm gonna have to look into that. Um. They do allow people with permits to put in cisterns now. Um, if it's pre-existing, but you didn't maintain the irrigation system and didn't have it permitted over the years. And so you're not kind of.
I actually asked Peter Larson years ago if he could find out what size it was. He didn't know what size it was, but it was, but it was big. We measured it.
Okay.
And, and.
So you really think it's a ten thousand gallon?
Yeah. Like, we have a, like a, you know, those tanker trucks that have those sticks in it, they can slide down. That's what was there that was at the house and you went down it.
Yeah.
But in order to assure that this is really gonna function in a modern sense, we, we're gonna need some sort of updated.
Calculations and, and the engineered statement of, of the cistern. Um, and then if it.
Statement from Peter Larson since he put it in was.
But he, you just mentioned, he doesn't know what's there. I mean, he has, they have to open it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Guess we could do that. Um, and then cisterns don't necessarily recharge water. So if, uh, to, to the ground. So if you're not using the whole volume, then what happens to the extra water? All the roof water comes off. It goes down your gutters. It goes into the cistern. The cistern fills.
Right.
You're not, you're not pumping out ten thousand gallons a week. So what happens to the extra water? That can be, when you have a cistern like that, that's my understanding that you have to have dry wells to handle the overflow flow.
The water, the, this is Marty Carpe. The water currently is circulated. Uh, there's an existing filter. And pump system that daily circulates that water. And the overflow runs out, but the, the water is in motion.
Where does the water run out to?
Well, i- it overflows out through the manhole.
It's just a um, overflow mechanism.
That's, yeah, that's an overflow mechanism as opposed to a capture and recharge.
Right.
Yeah, can I just add that? And I think in, just because of the area where your property is, I think this is just a really good case of the need for drywells.
For drywells.
So I, I personally like to see that put in.
But if you have a ten thousand gallon thing system. And you use that water to irrigate, if we, if we, if we access that to ir- to, to water the grass and the plants and stuff like that, and we use that water. Aren't you sort of circulating it if you, if?
So, again, I, I don't know enough about the irrigation law. I think in order for, have a cistern use. The way the town works now, you're supposed to fill it with trucked in water.
Right.
You're supposed to have it metered. Um, you're supposed to collect trucked in receipts. I don't know how much you can collect. I'd have to, I'm gonna have to look into this. How much stormwater you can collect and, and um, you have to renew your permit every year.
Okay.
So there's a whole permitting process for the irrigation system if you want to continue using it.
Well, do people, are people allowed to collect rainwater now for irrigation in the town of Shelter Island?
Uh, I've not heard of anyone collecting water and for what purpose?
Instead of, well, to, to sort of irrigate instead of, instead of, so you're using the water, you know.
I, I do remember some of the arguments when the irrigation code was up last updated. And there were some proponents saying, let's allow that to happen and others saying, no, we want to make sure. That the stormwater coming down goes back into the aquifer so that we're hydrating the, the island, so to speak. Um.
Okay.
Again, that, I'll, some more research will have to be done into that. And I would need, um, I think the board needs a, an engineered system. Uh, you know, for both, for both solutions.
It's all, it's also important to, to have the water recharging all the time and probably the usage that you're thinking of using the cistern would be more in the summer when you've got.
Right.
Vegetation growing, you know, summer months.
So then the winter and the spring it fills up and then we have us the water. If it, the overflow mechanism goes into drywells, I, I, and that's a, an engineered system that I think we can accept that. As long as it works with the irrigation law.
Okay. With the drywell, is that purpose to store the water? I mean, how does it get back into the aquifer?
So a drywell is, I.
Please drop the screen share. Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
So a, a drywell basically, you may have seen them on the side of the road or even on the highway going down there. In our case, they're usually eight foot diameter rings. Um, they have no bottom to them. And then they have perforations all around the sides. Sometimes they have ten foot rings. They come in different heights, two foot, four foot. Uh, and they can be stacked to make a tall pool. Um, so you put a, a travel, so you put a slab over the top so it holds dirt, it doesn't fill in. And then the water can weep through the bottom with no bottom in it and weep out the sides. If the bottom ever became silted over, it's able to go out the sides too. Um, so it's a, it's a mechanism of recharging roof water through gutters, through downpipes, back into the ground. And it limits water flow over the surface of the ground, which could carry contaminants into the, into the wetlands.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. The one other item we discussed, and I, I think you were in agreement with it, was a, a five mu- uh, gallon per minute pump. On the structure. Um, the water lens in your neighborhood is very, very taxed and shallow. And so the idea is just to, to pull out the water more slowly. Um, typically you have a, a, a storage tank inside the house. And so that when you need it, it just fills the storage tank slowly. Hopefully that's.
And so you get that through a well guy, like to put a.
So you already have a well. You already have a new well. So I, I, it might be just a, um, again, I, I am. Haven't installed one myself, so I don't know who installed your well, whether it's Gregor or someone at Gregor. So you can talk to Jeff and uh, just, you might have to put us a less powerful pump in and then a storage facility in the basement. A cistern, in essence, but for potable water.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
I, I have a question. So all of this construction is all in the vegetable, right?
Everything is invested.
Right. And in theory in code, there's no, you're allowed to remove things, but you're not allowed to go up anything new.
Right.
According to code. I understand the trade off you're saying, but.
I think this is substantial trade off and that's why, and, and it's a safe issue too.
I understand. I'm just saying, according to code.
Yeah.
Which is the law. You know, it's a nice trade off, but we're not.
The, the, the code says none.
Correct.
But how do you see this?
I have, I don't, I need the code in front of me to do that.
I'm trying to remember exactly, because we're not in the twenty five foot area, we're in the seventy five foot areas. We're actually.
Off.
In the place where in theory, there is no.
Uh, so I'll read one, I have a, I have it copied out here, one twenty nine two. Existing structures on a lot without a bulk end. Reconstruction with, with expansion beyond the footprint, if it is farther away from the designated wetlands. Than the nearest point of the existing construction. In this case, there are wetlands on both sides. But the proposed expansion to me is within the plane of the house, parallel to the well. It's not moving closer to the wetlands on the, on the, at the rear of the house. It's not moving closer to the wetlands on the front of the house. It's moving, it's being in the wetlands within the plane of the house in the other direction.
Yeah, what I, one matter what it, even if it's on the plane, still the corner will be going closer to.
It's not going closer to the house because the house is already, the, the, the corners of the house are already defined. So technically it's not going closer than the house is already to either wetland. Joe, does that logic make sense to you?
I'm just looking, I'm going purely by the, reading the code of, my understanding was like the, basically within the vegetable buffer. Or an existing house, you're like, you're able to in place and not an inch any other way. Is my understanding of reading of code. Again.
Reconstruction with expansion beyond footprint, if it is fur- farther away from the designated wetlands.
Right. But we're.
But you're, but you're in, you're in the, the wetlands.
Yeah. Right, so there's no way of going.
Well, you're further, further on and, but with.
No, you're, you're, you're in the seventy five foot. You're a hundred percent inside the wetlands.
But you're not going any closer than the existing houses.
Here you can say you could go three hundred feet because you're all still within this, it's all built inside the wetland, in the seventy five foot. It's like, it's sort of like you're inside of it, the space, and you're in here and you're going, why is it going like this? It's not, it's not going closer, but it's still within the wetland. And your, the whole idea, I think, is to not put any more surface blocking the wetland.
We're removing.
I'm trying to make sure I understand. Here's one wetlands line, um, from this wetland. Right?
Get on, here's the other setback that goes here. But they're proposing in here and right there. You're not going closer than the house this direction, not going closer than the house.
By expanding this out, you're going closer. I definitely, it's like, it is closer. This.
Being expanded.
I don't see how it's not.
Yes, we.
It's, it's those portions.
Done, Chris.
Yeah.
The stones.
Yeah, yeah. So again, this is.
The one that's permeable land.
Okay, bother me too much. I think I'm more worried about the, the, I think, I think it's not permeable. I understand the safety trade off, but I also.
Yeah, that's like.
Well, reason for putting on the wetlands is to.
But getting rid of it.
Impact the wetland.
One on the, on the south side is going to. It's just areas to be renovated that are crosshatched.
Right, so that one on the north side has a roof over.
Existing roof?
No, it's a, a roof that's built against the house and projecting out.
That's a new roof.
Yes.
It's a new projection.
I'm sorry, where, where is the new roof you're referring to?
Over the entry, air entry porch, empty uh, stoop. The elevations show a, 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 a little covered roof over that. And, and the plans show the dotted line represents overhead structure. So that's the expansion into the wet.
What about?
Current footprint. And I, I can, I'm, I'm just going based on. Here's, here's the space, it's what's covering, and it's getting bigger within the wetlands. It's what it feels like.
I, I think, I, I thought that, that, that covered stoop, that, that front step. Um, it, it is a bit of a safety issue as uh, I, I thought we alluded to before.
Right, but the code doesn't say anything about a safety issue being a, an okay to go ahead and do something in the wetlands. Doesn't say that. It says you don't do things.
But what about?
We al- we also have five board members here with potentially altering positions.
I know, I'd like to. Yeah, but I should understand.
And yeah, and we can, um, and to me, this, it's a, a, a numerous amount. Especially in comparison to ripping out all that asphalt driveway and putting down washstone. Um, it's not aggravating, aggravating by going closer, directly closer to.
Yeah.
To the wetland, it's parallel to both.
Yeah.
And that's, that would be my, my position.
But still that.
But it's a, it's a.
So you're looking.
Four person review, five person.
No, I, I, I know all that. I'm trying to understand what the code says. I think we should put something in the code about safety.
I, can I recommend something if, if it's, I was just looking at the prior denial letter that it's, this isn't. So maybe the solution would be to send it back to the building inspector to make a determination. Since the building inspector is the one who would make that determination as to what the um, relief required actually is. That might be the.
Yeah. Yeah, I still know. I'm trying, again, I'm just trying to understand.
You think that's a good solution, Matt?
Yeah, that works for me. The, the building firm, which is, their job is to, is, I mean, based on code.
Right, because in a normal situation, you would have the building inspector would provide you with the notice of, if, the notice of disapproval, which would state what the relief required is.
Right, but they changed.
If they've since changed the plans, if the building inspector now says, well, this no longer qualifies because there's been an expansion outside of the footprint, then that's the board.
We've reduced the plans. The, the new plans are a smaller porch. There, there was a proposed. Like full front porch and an, and an expansion to the garage. Both of them have been deleted.
Understood.
That's in place, so.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think on the original file letter. Uh, it's hard to make a stoop with raised, raised steps out of stone that's set in sand. You can't really do that. But the, the steps on both and the stoop, if it would appease um, our board, could be set with. With like a wood deck with boards that are apart that allows water to go through. It's more permeable. And it would have the same sa- safety factors. Um, I did, it just sounds like it's potentially what um. We're discussing is the impermeable addition of impermeable surface on both sides of the house. The cu- the covered porch on the one side is, is already covered and ready has a, a patio. So enclosing those components, which the ZBA gave you permission to do is not an issue. Uh, the expansion of the garage was an expansion uh, that we couldn't really take on, entertain. And um, I did push you guys on, on making that stoop smaller and um, you know, presenting the materials that we could better understand it. And find a way of approving it.
But my understanding is that what the ZBA approved is really setback. They're not doing a review based on, not doing a review based on wetlands.
Correct.
They're, right, exactly. That's very our job. Yes. So is that our job or is that a? Building inspector job?
The building inspector makes a determination as to what relief is required. So he can't issue a building permit unless you comply with the town code. You get issued a letter of denial based on these specific reasons because you don't meet these specific sections of code. If he comes back with a letter that says, I can't issue you your building permit. If he comes back with a letter that says, I can't issue you your building permit because, you know, these reasons. And it's, if it addresses your concern or if he's okay with it, that's how you would find out. It's the building inspector that if somebody disagrees with, you would appeal to the zoning board. So. I mean, that would be the procedure that you would go by if there's a discrepancy.
It seems like.
Or a concern.
Yeah, it seems like denial basically just more of a broad, it's something in regulated areas. I'm just going to deny based on that. Generally versus specifically.
Okay, so maybe, maybe we'll take that tactic.
He could say it's, it's beyond, what's the specific? It's, it's beyond the footprint, you know, like he would say, it doesn't comply with that.
That's the question.
With that language.
So I would like to know, but.
Okay, so.
I mean, you could also just request.
I, I, yeah, I think, why don't we do that? I'll make a request for an interpretation from the building department. Make it tomorrow.
That would have me a lot.
In the interim, we'd love to get the information on the drywall system, the count, plant count. And how do you guys want to handle this open information for two more weeks? Instead of a full continuance or do you want a full continuance for another?
Does the CAC need to?
CAC has chimed in.
They have done a follow up.
I think we read their comments last time.
Yeah.
Have they seen their new plans?
The CAC hasn't seen new plans, but this is a smaller footprint and with items reduced. So it's really no different than the previous application, just smaller in what they're asking.
But just to clarify, the CAC did say on point three, the expansion shall, shall be allowed only upwards. No footprint expansion within the 75 vegetative buffer. That was from our.
Let's, let's see what the building department comes back with on the interpretation. So to answer my question, do you want to continue this next month? Do you want to leave it open two weeks for the submission of additional information? Which is your preference.
I hope we can do it in two weeks. But again, does that mean we have a meeting in two weeks? Two weeks still?
No, that means we got, wait for the information and then when we meet next, we have two weeks to submit information. And then next week, we give you more time if you guys think you need more time. As long as we have it by the next meeting, and then we can discuss it further in our next meeting. With the interpretation, with the additional information in hand.
Yeah, absolutely. And it just, I had just an additional question regarding the drywells. To be clear, should the cistern come into compliance? And it's approved for some usage in, in. You know, again, and it's a compliant system, we can, we can use that in addition to the installation of drywells, correct?
For overflow, yeah. Have all the, you have the main depository in the system, if that's permitted under the irrigation code. And, and then you could continue. And then you could continue using your. And then the hydrate, the irrigation system we have in now is just really for the planting beds around the house. But I saw, I didn't even see anything in the wall. I could be wrong. But, um, but if with the cistern, you're permitted to do whatever the irrigation code allows you to do.
But it's, it's two separate issues. So if they want to use a cistern in some capacity and they can get the permitting, it's great. But we're not going to be using that as a dry, it's not functioning as a dry.
Only if, if the, the overflow has sufficient capacity to take the full roof load.
Okay, okay.
So we just need an engineer to say what. Questioning?
I think what we're asking is that, I think we have to, I would ask you to look into the permitting process to see if this is even a feasibility. With the new irrigation code changes.
The permitting for the cistern.
Or the irrigation system, which would then would be the ultimate reason for using the cistern.
Okay.
And also just for clarity, if we had a drywell, any overflow from the cistern, since the cistern currently. Is of such capacity to take on most of the rain from the roof. Yeah, I mean, it only overflows when it's full and it's rarely ever full. But when it is, that overflow could then go into a drywell. Would that be, would that satisfy?
That is what I'm suggesting if, if the irrigation code permits that.
Got it.
And then also just on the vegetated plan from Christian Clark, you'll, you'll go back and get like a count of those plans.
So I, I make a motion to close this public hearing and leave it open.
If you close the hearing and they cannot do any changes to the plan.
Oh, okay. So how do you, how do you?
Adjourn.
Adjourn, I'm sorry. Again, I'm new at this. How do we, we're going to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. For just written comments and we have two weeks, so the 25th. 14 plus.
No, if it's not, if it's adjourned, the correspondent stays open. Yeah, to the next meeting.
To the next meeting. Okay, okay. Awesome. I'll second that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I must recuse myself on the next one.
So we're going to do Seven Cheekwood Avenue. This is the road on the way to yacht club. Again, as the architect, so he must recuse himself. Yeah, which is to build a 2200, Matt Sherman, go ahead.
I, I just want to put in the record that there were two pieces of correspondence submitted for.
Okay.
From the Heights at Sherman.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Debbie Shepherd. She's on, attending the meeting by Zoom. I'm not going to hash over the whole project. We went through it in pretty excruciating detail last month. If I could share my screen, I've got a couple of new things just to address some of the questions that the board had from the last meeting. And were brought up by some nearby neighbors. Okay, just a real quick revamping of our, our reiteration of what we're proposing here. We've got a piece of property down on Cheekwood Avenue, right by the yacht club. Everybody knows the area. You've got Cheekwood Avenue to the south. You've got the Sound Shelter Island Sound to the north. There's an existing two story house on the east side of the property. Swimming pool in the middle pushing over toward the west side of the property. And what we're proposing to do is we want permission to build this two story accessory sleeping quarters. It complies, the design as, as proposed complies with the A zone setbacks. We're far enough from the road. We're far enough from the side property line. We are also more than 75 feet from the wetlands boundary. So we're not within that vegetated buffer that you guys were talking about on that previous application. We're within the adjacent regulated area. That's 75 feet to 100 feet is the area that we're looking at here. There's also a small detached garage on site down here in that lower southwest corner. There's a parking area next to that garage, also a parking spot in front of it. And then there's a couple of parking spots in front of the garage that's attached to the main house. One of the questions that came up during the hearing was, we're in a FEMA flood zone. The flood zone here is an AE eight. So anything at the eight foot elevation FEMA says is in significant risk of flooding during, during significant events. So what I did was I put together this graphic. It's, it basically shows what the grading is now and what we're proposing to do. I had kind of, I'd gotten the wrong impression on the, some of what the Heights had said during the last hearing. This was, this specific application was not discussed with the local FEMA office. It was, their comments were just about FEMA procedures in general. And one of the things that I think occurred is there was some confusion as to what we were looking to do with the grading. The existing, the, the finished floor area is going to be at, at 10 feet. So where I'm standing right now, at this house, that floor area, that floor level will be 10 feet. The grade around it is at six feet. So that's coming up four feet from grade to the finished floor. The grade is not coming up four feet, as was just said during the last hearing. The grade is coming up on this graphic. It shows it fairly well, I hope. The light green area is where the grade doesn't get touched. That all stays exactly as it is today. That Kelly green area, the middle green, that area comes up from a, from zero to a maximum of 12 inches. And that 12 inch line is right up here on that south, on the north side of the building where those stairs are. It goes from a six foot elevation to a seven foot elevation to meet the bottom of those steps. And then the dark green areas, those are, we're coming up up to 18 inches of, above the existing grade. And so that area is right down here on the south side. This contour that comes around the north side of the garage is a five foot contour. So in this area right here, it comes up about 18 inches, give or take. So you've got these two small little islands of increased grade. You've got the majority of this area, it comes up between zero and six inches, really, for most of it. There is a maximum difference of about 12. So the, any impacts on flooding, depending on where that flooding comes from. If the flooding is coming from the sound, it's got to come over top of the bulkhead, the seawall. It's got to come over top of this seven foot contour. Here, there is a depression right between these two seven foot contours. It's got to come over the seawall. It's got to come through this depression and then it's got to come over to this area. So impacts on site itself, there are none from flooding from the, from the sound. Just as there's no impacts on the neighboring property or on the road. Because all of this area here is where that stormwater is going. It's coming in through this area and coming over to Cheekwood Avenue. Flooding from Cheekwood Avenue going the other way. If it's a heavy rain event, tides are normal. You've got the exact opposite situation occurring where the flooding, because you're down here on the road. You're at a five foot elevation here. You're at a six foot elevation here. And so the flooding from the road is going to come in this direction and head toward the north northeast. Again, toward that cut that's between those two seven foot contours. So the regrading that's going on over here by this building, it, it has no way to impact the flooding. That's either coming off a Cheekwood or coming over the sound. So hopefully that helps clarify some of those issues, some of those concerns that, that were voiced about the, the changes in grade. One of the other things that was brought up was de-watering. The town doesn't like to de-water for obvious reasons. The question was brought up about the LP tanks and the stormwater cisterns. Just a real quick graphic here, just to show the relationship. The ground elevation in the area where the LP tank is going to be, is at about a five foot, five, a 5.5 elevation, five foot, six inches, give or take. LP tanks are three feet in diameter. So given it about a foot off of groundwater. You've got about six inches or so, get a little bit more than that from the tank to a surface. It's enough, enough room to have grass grow over top of topsoil over top of that, that LP tank. The stormwater drywell, it's a two foot deep drywell. The regulation and the standard is to keep the drywells at least two feet above groundwater. Groundwater in this area, based on the two test holes that we had done, was it about one foot plus or minus? Obviously, that's going to fluctuate at this site. It's also going to fluctuate based on, based on the tide, excuse me. In most of these areas, we're seeing about a two foot fluctuation based on where the tide is at. Both in a monthly tide cycle and in a seasonal tide cycle. Grades above those stormwater drywells are in about the six foot ballpark, maybe a couple of more inches, depending on, on where we're at. As we get over closer to the building, that grade is at a seven foot. So the grade on the store, the drywells near that are going to be six and a half inches or something to that, to that ballpark. Couple of things that had come up during the, during the last hearing. We had gone over, we've gotten a letter from the Heights. We've gone over it point by point. Here, I'll stop my share. The Heights has sent another letter. I'm not, I'm not going to go through it point by point. But I did want to touch on a couple of things. They had mentioned in this current letter, they had five issues, the first being water usage. We talked about that a lot at the last hearing. They provided some data for more, more data as requested for timeframes as far as how much water usage. The, this specific property has, has seen over the years. And it's actually a fairly enlightening spreadsheet that they provided. They compared basically the houses along Cheekwood Avenue, in essence. And you'll see who had the more, more usage, who had the less usage. And it's actually, it's, it's timely. The town board today during their work session. They've had a discussion about the moratorium in large buildings, right? And it makes sense. You, you, that, that your, your gut reaction is a larger house is going to use more water. For people, it just seems to make sense. They had brought the town engineer in and asked his opinion on it. And he said that that's not necessarily the case. The size of the house, it's going to have a minor impact, of course. But the bigger thing is things like swimming pools, tennis courts, things along those lines. So adding a couple of bedrooms, a kitchen at, adding this accessory building to this site. It's not, it's, it, then we don't have any hard data to say that that's going to specifically significantly increase the water usage of this site. And when I was looking at the information that the Heights had supplied, one of the things that jumped out to me was, yes. The, the Shepherd's house has the highest water usage amongst the other properties on, on Cheekwood Avenue. Its square footage is 3,128 square feet, four bedrooms, four bathrooms. The next highest house, 300, 2,982 square feet, five bedrooms, one bathroom. Their water usage went from, for the 11 year average, Shepherd's 156. The next highest, 67. House is basically the same size. Shepherds are using more water. Shepherds have a swimming pool, which the other one does not. Shepherds have an irrigation system, which the other one does not. I don't believe the other one does or not. I, I can't say definitively that it does not. But what really jumped out at me is as you go down this list, there's almost no correlation between house size and water usage. The largest house on the list, 4,286 square feet, six bedrooms, used 29,000 gallons in the same amount of time. That Shepherd's used 156. So there's, there's just no, the, the size of the house, based on these numbers, doesn't show to matter. So, you know, it doesn't really come into play specifically as far as the wetlands permit is concerned here. When we're looking at wetlands applications and properties that are within the regulated area. Our biggest concern is, we've got two big concerns. One is where are they pulling water from? Are they going to impact the aquifer right underneath the property? Because these water from properties are clearly on fragile aquifers. The other is where are they sending their wastewater? Because they're sending it into what's by definition, a very shallow ecosystem and a very fragile area. The fact that this property is on the Heights water and the Heights sewer helps mitigate both of those problems. The Heights still has to deal with it, obviously. They've got to provide water service for these extra two bedrooms. They've got to provide sanitary service for these extra two bedrooms. But it's not on site, which is what the main concern is when we're looking at a, looking at a wetlands application. And looking at the negative environmental impacts associated with that wetlands application. The other thing, there was, I'm trying to see if there's anything else that we haven't touched on. There was some questions about the irrigation system. It's a legally permitted and ongoing irrigation system. Any modifications that are going to occur to it will occur through the normal permitting process with the town. So anything would have to go through the, the building department. And then the last item that was an open item and also based on the Heights letter. Was the issue of whether or not this building can be considered an accessory sleeping structure. Whether it should be going for additional review by the plan, by the zoning board or anybody else. That decision has already been made. And I know the board understands this, but for other people who may be paying attention. The process for these applications is we submit an application to the building department for what we want to do. They issue a letter of denial. You guys were just talking about it with that last application. The building department issues a letter of denial based on what doesn't comply with town code. So that determination that this building qualifies. So that determination that this building qualifies as an accessory sleeping structure or an accessory structure that is not an accessory apartment, which is what's not allowed in the nearshore overlay, the building department already said that's the case. The building department also said it doesn't have to go to the ZBA for any type of interpretation, any type of review. It's right there in the letter of denial by omission. They're saying that it doesn't have to go to the ZBA. They're saying it does have to come to the planning board to review it as far as Chapter 129, which is the wetlands code, which is what we're asking you guys to do. So the idea that there's a missing step here, that step has been resolved. It may not be resolved to people who are opposed to the project's satisfaction, but it has been resolved. So that's pretty much what I have as far as additional information. If the board has any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them now, or if you want to have other people have their say, I'll be happy to come back up, whatever works.
Just a quick question. So I was listening to the town board meeting, I heard Joe speaking. What he was emphasizing was accessory usage, not like accessory drilling, but accessory uses, like the sprinkler system. What are the plans right now for that? Because obviously, that's what's contributing here in the data, probably, much likely, with all the extra watering.
Yeah, I would say that, I don't know specifically, but I think the logic dictates that that is correct, just because the numbers just don't play out with anything else. I don't have an answer for you. I will, I can defer to Ms. Shepherd and see if she has an answer as far as the plans for the irrigation system, and if we don't have it now, we can come up with a plan and get it to you within the next two weeks.
But that also is not a wetland, no, it's an issue.
No, it's just...
Yes, it's a curiosity.
Because I think that that was what was behind this number.
Should I answer?
Yeah.
I could answer that question.
Just state your name, please, for the record.
Yes, this is Debbie Shepherd, the property owner. So in the past, when we landscaped after we renovated, we did have additional temporary watering, which is no longer in place. The watering that is left is permitted, and as I understand it from our landscape designer, we'll go through the same process again, we'll do some planting around this elevated structure, and there will be some temporary watering that will have to take place. But we're working hard on a landscape design that requires the least amount of water for the long run.
Anyone else want to speak?
I'm speaking on behalf of Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation. I have that water data. Does anyone need a copy of that?
No, we don't.
Okay. I would refer any questions you have on that to Stella, the general manager, because she's more familiar with that particular aspect than I am. I want to talk about a number of things today, in addition to the second letter that we We also, that we sent earlier today, I'd also want to talk about the town code, Chapter 60. Town code, Chapter 60, is titled Environmental Quality Review Law. In Chapter 60, I question a number of things. In the previous hearing, and the applicant submitted this new document dated June 13th, it said this is a Type 2 action. So my question to you is, who determined that Type 2 action?
Right. Okay. That section refers to the state law of SEACRA, which is State Environmental Quality Review Act, and SEACRA within it has a list specifically of all the Type 2 actions, which don't require further environmental review. Included in that list, it might be number 11, is single-family residence properties, which I'm familiar with. However, in Chapter number 60, the town adopted a local law pursuant to the authority of the municipal home rule under that state environmental law. And if you look at that section of the title of that chapter, it says, so I would dispute that it's a Type 2 action. And the reason for that is because, and I will read the actual section of that code, number 60-12, Type 1 action says, for further purposes of factor, Type 1 actions include, as you said, the list for the New York State Code and Regulations under Section 12 or 617. In addition to above, and so it's an addition to that, the following actions shall be Type 1 action within the town of Shelter Island. 60-12, number four, projects which will introduce or make possible new homes or other facilities for human occupation or habitation in a flood hazard zone of the town, which clearly this is a structure for human habitation. That 60-8 says, when an agency, department, or board officer of the town contemplates directly carrying out, funding, or approving a Type 1 action, a full environmental assessment EAF form must be prepared by it or the applicant's behalf. So far, only a short EAF has been submitted by the applicant.
I disagree that this is a facility is a single-family home. I think a facility would be like a nursing home or something. I don't see why you would have a full environmental review for a single-family home.
Well, it says because it's in a FEMA flood zone, that's why.
I disagree that that is...
So if you go back and look at the adopted comprehensive plan, which ties into this, Chapter 3, which is natural resources, says a portion of that implementation has an action number three, says amend the zoning norms to provide special controls in areas of shallow groundwater to enforce maximum feasible recharge and recyclable water, including reducing residential density, limiting accessory dwellings in the affected areas. So this is the exact opposite of what the comprehensive plan is trying to achieve, not to mention that there are no other residential accessory structures on Chequid Avenue. If approved, this would be the first residential accessory living structure on Chequid Avenue. So when you tie those two things together, and then you look at the other issue that I brought up before, which was Chapter 4 on the Recultural Resources Goals and Objectives, it says a further goal is the protection of the island's small-town commuting way of life, its rural character, natural resources which support those qualities. This requires continued matching of land use, lands' natural and visual qualities, and the protection of critical visual assets, including scenic views from the roads and coastal view corridors. That's an exact quote from that section of the code of the adopted plan. So the size of this accessory structure, we feel, has a negative impact on both the scenic view from the road and from the coastal view, as it seemed by all who approached by ferry or boat. In addition, at the last hearing, I also want to address a few comments that were made. Matt, this evening addressed no de-watering, so that was good to hear, as well as some grading changes that were proposed, so clarification on that was helpful. However, we feel that our request, this application, to reiterate this code to the zoning board for the decision, because in many cases, and actually, there was one just last month, where the zoning board missed, not the zoning board, the building inspector missed, a section of the town code, which we then brought to their attention, and they corrected that in that public hearing. So they don't always...
The planning board doesn't have the jurisdiction to send an application to the zoning board.
The planning board, under the town code, does have the jurisdiction to refer something to the zoning board for interpretation or a decision and determination. They're the only board that does, other than the building inspector, according to the town code. So the whole discussion, so that's what we're asking. Because if you look at two different sections of the town code, whether it's a kitchen or a kitchenette, we can debate that again, but there's also the nearshore overlay district, and Chapter 133 is clearly under the jurisdiction of the zoning board, and not the planning board, as you said. So that whole discussion, where it says, and I'll read this quote, Section 133, 12F3, defining chapter, which is very clear, "Building and structures shall be located at least 100 feet landward edge of the tidal or freshwater wetlands." Exactly. Right out of Chapter 133. Landscaping and irrigation, I think, are crucial to that missing information, which we talked about last time. And then my closing statement is really the same as we said last month. We're restating the position that if a structure, if we persist in looking at a structure, that we would prefer that it be a more modest, one-level structure. We're already raising the height for the FEMA flood, and it'd actually be a subordinate or incidental structure to the principal residence. Between the square foot living area of the chart that Matt proposed last time and what's being proposed for this application, this would be the largest square foot living area combined of all the dwellings on Chequid Avenue, because you'd be over 5,000 square feet, an environmentally sensitive area. So I would encourage you to look at Chapter 60, and again, those sections of Chapter 133, and then the reference, where it does say the planning board does have the authority to, so it did to the zoning board, for any decisions or determinations that are within Chapter 133. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Grace Myers. I'm the next neighbor, I live at 5 Chequid Avenue, and I just wanted to add a few comments to what Lori said. Unfortunately, there have been no fundamental changes in the proposal since the last meeting. And so I just want to reiterate that my husband and I are still opposed for many of the same reasons that we wrote about in our letter, as did many other neighbors, and that were discussed at the last meeting. And I don't need to rehash all of them, but I just wanted to point out the three points that we feel most strongly about, and why we feel like this should not be approved. Number one, we really, we honestly don't think that what's been proposed is in fact an accessory structure, but rather a 2,300-square-foot house, which has been cleverly designed to meet the town's definition of such. And what one person calls on a floor plan, a home office, can easily be labeled a third bedroom. It has a window, so I mean, it's semantics at a certain point. It has a full kitchen, minus the stove, and we just think that it's misleading to call it anything other than basically a second home on one piece of property, which I don't think would meet any of the zoning requirements. And then the second point is just, again, a question of how the wetlands buffer can and should be utilized. Wetlands rules exist for a reason, and the fact that the structure sits on stilts that are five feet above the grade is a direct acknowledgement of its incursion into sensitive wetlands area. So I think this is really a maximum request for build-out of length, width, of height. And then number three, as someone who grew up in the Heights, I grew up on this strip, I chose to buy a house, was built in 1883, and restore it. I think we have to ask ourselves the question of what's appropriate development for a historic district? And I just feel that the proposed structure, by virtue of its size, its awkward orientation and its height, really alters the historic character and the vistas of the neighborhood and the block, and does create more density in what is already an overly dense community. So, thank you.
And if I might go next, this is Richard Myers, Grace's husband, also the property owner of 5 Chequid Avenue. The only thing I'd add to Grace's remarks is that we are by no means opposed to development under the law, and with proper review at a professional level on all aspects. What we feel, and subject to that, proper review, determination, clarification of laws, proper legal involvement, proper jurisdiction and authority at both the local and the state level to make what we think is a very, very serious decision that has island-wide consequences as far as what this development is, and frankly, I think there's been somewhat of an underestimation, maybe intentionally to get approval, maybe not intentionally, maybe accidentally, around just how boundary-setting this approval or disapproval will be for the interpretation of local law and potentially the contradiction of local law and/or state law. So these are serious issues. They require serious professionals to vet them. I am by no means equipped to do so, but I am a professional who understands when I see something that is proper and fully vetted and approved or disapproved. I'm behind it, whatever may be the outcome there, if there is a proper vetting under the rule of law. If there is not, then I think we all need to take a pause and figure it out, and my feeling remains that we are not at that point yet. And my feeling also remains that the planning board, with due respect to everyone in the room, may not be the only interpretive body that has jurisdiction over such a wide-ranging boundary-setting decision. So that's my only addition to what Grace had said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm John Evans. I live two doors down from the proposed accessory structure, which I think really is a misnomer. I mean, what you have, and we talked about conflicts of interest, this is an appearance of a conflict of interest. So I mean, the impression I get is, we want something done, so let's hire Ian McDonald, who's the chair of the planning board, to design a structure that's how he makes his living, that may or may not be authorized under the law. Now, this is a 2,289-square-foot accessory structure. If it had two bedrooms, it wouldn't qualify, but Mr. McDonald has called a third bedroom an office. It has a window, it can easily be converted to an office, it's got all the facilities for cooking, except the stove. It's really another home, and as such, it really should go to the ZBA. But he's retained jurisdiction over this process for his committee. Now, I'm just asking you to do the right thing, which may not be the easy thing, because I know you work with Ian McDonald, I'm sure you're friendly with him, I'm sure he does a good job, but I think in most instances, but I think in this case, with this structure, I think that you ought to get the input and have the zoning board of appeals, because I think that's what the law really specifies for, to have them approve this structure rather than this committee. The island's changing fast. I've been here 70 years, and I think, on the island, 70 years, and I think in the last five years, it's changed more than the past 65. I mean, there... I mean, they're new, as Georgiana Ketchum used to describe this as the, may she rest in peace, as the unhampton, because of its understated nature. We're fast losing that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment, sir?
Sure.
The planning board is the only board that has the authority to issue wetland permits. The zoning board does not have that authority. And also, the chairman has gone through the ethics board and was issued a determination that he recused himself and went through the proper channels. So I just want to state that for the record. Okay?
He stated it for the record, you know.
I know. I just want to make sure that, that you understand that this board is not giving special circumstances because of the chairman.
Okay, but the appearance.
But it's a small island, and, you know, people need to live here together.
All right. Well, no, as we, as we should, but those are my comments. Thank you.
I'd like to make comments. This is Kimberly Ray of Westervelt and Ray, and I represent John Evans, Richard Myers, and Grace Evans. And I actually have many comments, which I don't think I'm going to be able to make tonight, because I think this process is still unfolding. So I'm going to ask this board to keep this hearing open for written comments and, in fact, to adjourn it to another hearing date. The first thing I'd like to say is in response to a comment that was just made about who has the authority to issue wetlands permits. It is true that that is now under the jurisdiction of the planning board. What is not under the jurisdiction of the planning board is allowing a home to be built in the nearshore overlay district that is within 100 feet of the shoreline. Lori Beard-Raymon cited to you several code sections that apply to this. This isn't just a wetlands permit. This is a really complicated application. There are FEMA issues, and I'm, I'm still in the process of briefing whether a FEMA construction permit would be required for this. I don't know, and I don't know whether Matt Sherman has investigated that. And I'm not talking about the procedures. I want to run down whether or not it is legally required for the applicant to, to obtain a permit from FEMA for this new construction. I don't have the answer to that, but that needs to be run down, because if so, we're then into federal jurisdiction. So it isn't just a wetlands permit here that we're, we're talking about. Another thing is that there has been a significant amount of back and forth about the ZBA. And I believe that this board is quite resistant. It appears to me, anyway, that this board is quite resistant to referring any aspect of this to the ZBA. And I don't really understand why. I would think that in, in an application of this complexity, with so many issues, really important issues, that are going to affect the island for, for many years to come, that you would want ZBA interpretation and review. Certainly, the applicant needs a variance to build this building for a variety of reasons. So that, that needs to happen, and not, not, not allowing that to happen, in my opinion, is reversible error here on the part of this board. But I'm just asking you to consider what, why, why would you not want to refer this to the ZBA on the issues that really are within their jurisdiction? Seems to me that it would aid you in your determination about whether to grant a wetlands permit or not. So I just ask this board to be more open-minded about this. It seems like there's, I detect a, a sense of resistance and defensiveness about this that I don't really understand. I think that the ZBA could be very helpful in this, at least with aspects of this, of this application. You cannot look at this site just because you're looking at a wetlands permit application. You cannot look at it in a vacuum. You, you really cannot. And I'd like to also say that, well, first of all, I wanted to ask the question. Someone asked the question previously, I think it was Lori Beard-Raymon, "Who made the determination that this is a type-two action?" That wasn't answered.
Attorney, yes, it was.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who?
Our attorney.
He did. All right, well.
She.
She did.
I'm sorry?
I, I did.
She did.
Who chain? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I did. I'm the attorney for the board.
I'm sorry. We've not met before. I'm sorry. I'm used to, I've never met you. I used to be Kevin McGowan, so I disagree with your, with your determination. I'm sure we both have experience in SEACRA. I certainly do in extremely large projects and small ones. But because this is different than the average construction project, it is not a type-two action. And I'm going to refer you specifically to, and you're familiar with this, but I'm reading it in for the record, 6 NYCRR, part 617. And I'm going to refer you to subsection 12, which is what I think you were referring to when you were categorizing this as, as a list, a listed action, listed type-two action. And I'm going to read that in its entirety. It says, and this is, this is type-two action, "Construction, expansion, or placement of minor accessory pertinent residential structures, including garages, carports, patios, decks, swimming pools, tennis courts, satellite dishes, fences, barns, storage sheds, or other buildings not dense, not changing land use or density." There is nothing minor about this so-called accessory sleeping quarters. It's huge. It's just enormous. It's bigger than, than the average house on the island, on Shelter Island, and it has major impacts. So I disagree with that characterization, and I would ask you to revisit that. If, if there was ever a case that required SEACRA review, this is it. You've received five detailed letters and extensive testimony from the neighbors and actually other members of the public, talking about the deleterious effects that this proposal is going, this proposed house is going to have upon the environment, views, density, traffic, and safety of the 100 children that are on this very crowded road every day in the summer, flooding, and other such issues that, that require SEACRA review. You, you cannot get around that. Just because this is a wetlands application, this would not pass muster. So I urge you to reconsider that. It won't hurt anything. And in fact, may I say, the applicant's engineer has submitted a short form environmental assessment, short environmental assessment form, some of which we've heard criticism from Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corp. is deficient and in error in places. I agree with that. I don't know that we need to get into that right now, because that's a, that's a detailed part of this analysis. But in my opinion, this is not a type-two action. It is unlisted. It's not a type-one action. It's, it's not a type-two action, because if you look at the actual, the actual spirit of that type-two listing, you can easily determine that this is not a minor pertinent structure. It just isn't. Factually, it's not. And to try to use, use SEACRA just to not perform a SEACRA review is, is just, it is not, that is not what is required of this board. State environmental quality review is required. So I ask the board to reconsider that, and that will be part of my written comments as well. That's in addition to Lori Beard-Raymon's earlier remarks about the FEMA aspects of this, which also relates to referring this to the zoning board of appeals. I'm also struck by the fact that Howard Johansson, the Chair of the Conservation Advisory Committee, has reported to you that at its June 12th meeting, this application was considered and roundly unanimously rejected. And the CAC has, has recommended that you reject it as well for the environmental reasons that we've all been discussing. In fact, Howard appeared here at the last meeting. I was able to watch it on the, on the video feed. And I believe that what he said was that granting this application would be a prescription for disaster over the next 15 or 20 years. I just don't think you can ignore that. I think that's, I think that is massively important here. I think he's right. I think Richard Myers has said this. This is, this has just got huge impacts. This is not your average, run-of-the-mill, garden-variety wetlands application. It's just not. And I think that looking at this through this hyper-focused lens, the wetlands, and trying to, trying to just avoid any other review, for example, by the zoning board of appeals, and to ignore the Conservation Advisory Committee, it is, is error. And I ask you to reconsider these things. This is an important function that you have, and it's, this needs much more professional and regulatory review than it's gotten. And also, I'd also like to make a comment on the historic district, the Shelter Island Heights Historic District in which this property resides. This property and two others are not what are called contributing structures, meaning they don't have the cultural and historic significance or importance that is necessary to, to be, be a contributing structure listed on the National Register inventory. But I think that the Shelter Island Heights Historic District is being given very, very short shrift here. And I, I just, I don't understand that. This is a very, very important, important cultural and historic treasure. It's a resource that Shelter Island has. You have this very large structure that I think is illegal, but we, that's, we'll set that aside for a moment, and just say that it is going to have an adverse effect upon the historic district. Now, you may not be aware of this, but in analyzing, when the National Park Service and SHIPPo were analyzing whether or not to, to designate the Shelter Island Heights Historic District as, as a, as a district, and in analyzing each and every one of the old buildings that are, are historic, have historic importance, it wasn't just about the buildings. What was really notable about this, and I do a lot of national preservation work as well as land use and environmental work, so I can tell you, this one was quite unique to me in that much, much discussion is given over to the fact that there are park, parklands and incredibly unique views that are part of the park, park and open space design that Frederick Law Olmsted designed, as you, as you may or may not know. That was considered extremely important by the National Park Service. So it isn't just the, these wonderful old historic buildings that are a part of our past that we can't ignore. It's also the view sheds, and that's, the view sheds have been brought up by many of the commentators. So their comments, those comments, have particular import, not just for them personally, but on the impact of the historic district as a whole. And I feel strongly enough about this that I'm going to provide you with the National Register's listing document so that you can see this. I'd like that to be part of this record, because I just don't think adequate, adequate considerations being given to what this non-contributing structure is going to do to the rest of the Heights. And that's not fair. It's not good for Heights. And I don't think it's good for the property owner. She probably disagrees, because I believe she wants this so-called accessory structure, very, very large, admittedly, structure, because, which, which, which is within the adjacent regulated area, because, as she told this board last month, she wants a porch with a water view. That is not justification. That is not hardship. That is not an adequate reason in any aspect of this regulatory proceeding. I also would like to say that along the lines of the Shelter Island Historic District, the comparison chart that Matt Sherman developed, we've tried to say this in the past, and I'm just going to say it flat out, that those comparisons are, in my opinion, unavailing, because they bastardize the contributing structures. They try to compare, they're using these numbers, these, these extrapolated numbers to give a modern perspective on comparison that isn't, that isn't correct. It's not right. It's trying to show you that the historic standards of yesterday that were observed by, when, when the builders of, of these, the Heights buildings somehow make this application meritorious. It's, it is not a correct or fair comparison, and I ask you to disregard it. It, it just does not provide you with, with properly-based analysis. And Matt, forgive me, Matt and I have worked upon many, many applications together in the past, but I feel very strongly that that is not a proper comparison. I'd also like to say that there's been a great deal of discussion here, and I think, I think, and I'm going to, I'm going to close with this. As I said, I have many, many other comments, but I want to, I want you all to ask yourself what we're doing here based on this application before you. And I'd like to talk about what this application is and what it isn't. It's styled as an accessory sleeping quarters, a cottage, accessory building. But Matt has, on two occasions during the last public hearing, confirmed, definitively confirmed that it is not an application for an accessory apartment. Absolutely not. And that, that's regulated under the zoning code, Shelter Island zoning code 133-17. So for those members of the board, whom, some of whom I know are very, very concerned, as am I, about the lack of housing stock here for community housing, that can't happen, because this is not, this application is not for an accessory apartment. So that's just not there. It's not available for that by, by the applicant's own assertion. So that's just not there. It's not available for that by, by the applicant's own assertion. So what is it really then? Is this really an accessory sleeping quarter? Or is it a house? Any sensible person, and you all are sensible people, have to know that this is a house. This is not an accessory structure. It's, it's a house with all the bells and whistles, including a kitchenette, kitchen area. It's got a eat-in kitchen. It's got an eat-in great room. It has kitchen facilities. I mean, we can argue the definition of kitchen from now until the cows come home, but any reasonable 10-year-old knows what a kitchen is. And this has got a kitchen in it. Maybe there's not a stove right now, but I see a space where you could put a stove in there. And that is not allowed under the code. In fact, 133 here with me here, dash seven sites as permissible uses in the AA zone, which this is, an accessory building used for sleeping quarters for domestics, house guests, and members of the family. It may not be used for rental purposes. And it may not have kitchen facilities. The accessory sleeping quarters shall contain more than two conventional bedrooms. Now, I don't know how any reasonable person can look at that den office, which is big, and not think that that's going to be a bedroom. It, it just, this just beggars logic to think that that's not a bedroom. It's not labeled a bedroom, but it's, it's going to be a bedroom, or it could be. It certainly could be used. This is not an accessory sleeping quarters. It has a very, very large great room, the kitchen facilities, the office, the two bedrooms, three bathrooms, well, two, I suppose. And it's going to provide for a major increase in density here. Because you're going to be able to house with those two or three bedrooms up to 10 people. So you're going to have 10 people using the water, using, using the resources that they're not using now. And that's not right. That's not what an accessory sleeping quarters is. So you really have to think about this. Are you really going to go along with this fiction? Because it is a fiction. Any reasonable trier of fact would understand that this is not, it's labeled an accessory sleeping quarters. It's also been labeled a cottage, because it is. It's a really big cottage. So you really have to decide whether you want to, want to buy this fiction just because it's in an application. You can reject it and ask that it be, be resubmitted. In any case, if, if, if it is a house, which I believe it is, and I think many of the commentators, most of them, have said the same thing, then it is illegal. You would very definitely have to go to the ZBA to get that permitted. So these are issues that I would like for you to think about. And I, again, I, without being too critical, I just, I hope that you will rethink this, this what appears to be intense resistance to any kind of referral to the ZBA. The ZBA needs to be involved in this review. You need that support. You, you, as the, a public board, need that support. You cannot look at this wetlands application in the vacuum that I think you're trying to, to look at it in. And particularly not on an application that is fraught with fiction and misleading labeling as this one. So I want to observe my other comments to be submitted in writing. I'd also like to ask if Matt has provided groundwater data. Because I think that was going to be done, that he sent you to do that in the last, in the last meeting. And I see that you have on that, on that one schematic that where the groundwater table is, but I don't, where are those calculations? Do we have those? Were those provided? Because they were, they were, you asked for those last time before, before adjourning.
Yeah, we've got the test hold data, which I'll provide to the board. I have not provided that yet.
Okay. I think that's very important. Yeah. Has there been any other drainage analysis been done of this site? Any calculations on drainage and runoff? Because this site, as it, as I said, I do a lot of this, and I don't, I don't know how you're going to get zero net runoff from this site. That's not going to happen with this giant building that's being put on stilts. And there is a minimal amount of grading. Thank you, Matt. That's helpful to know. But this is, this is so problematic. I, I just ask you to really rethink your framing of this application. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else out there? Unmute yourself. There we go.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. I, I would like to support Lori Beard Raymond in her assessment that this is in fact a type one action under the town code. Clearly, this is habitation in a flood zone. And that's what, that's what 60 dash, hold on, I'll get to the number, what? 60 dash 12 B4 says. It's about habitation in a flood zone. So that makes it a type one action. And all that means is that now the applicant needs to fill out a full environmental assessment form that gives all the details that seem to be missing, that are unclear, that don't seem to match the comprehensive plan or the zoning or the traffic or the noise that could be created, the runoff. I, I, I really believe that this is necessary for this application. And probably an environmental consultant should also take a deep look at it. It is absolutely in a critical environmental area. It is a habitat for endangered species. We know that from the short environmental assessment form sent in. It also, you know, the historic district has value very much when you look at SECR and there are just multiple issues that will come up when you do that assessment and, and review it properly to the full extent of the state environmental law. This is certainly not just, I, I've said this before, that not every single family dwelling is a type two action. And I know that that has been the history of the town to make that statement over and over again. And I think recently the town has looked closer at the environmental quality review of the town. And, and I believe that this is one indication and one project that does require that special review. The other thing that I will reiterate and support is the CAC's denial of this because it's within 100 feet of the wetlands regulated area. And clearly, the code says there are no buildings allowed with sanitary or wastewater disposal in that area. So that's why the CAC denied this. It's also why you should do the same. The building needs to be moved out of that area. There has never been anything constructed within, as a, as a, as a building. I'm not talking a swimming pool or a patio within that 100-foot wetlands regulated area. I can find nothing. I've gone through all of the wetlands permits issued going back to 2016. No one has ever been able to construct a new building within 100 feet of the title wetlands. So I am going to reiterate what the representative for the neighbors has said, that I think you need to adjourn this meeting. You need to reschedule it. You need to double check on all of these concerns that people have been bringing to the table. Christina, I'm sorry, you didn't get a copy of my correspondence, but I did send it to the new clerk and the town clerk as well. And yeah, I just think that the environmental review is of utmost importance here. It really is going to be the best way to evaluate what you believe, what, and, and, and maybe curtail concerns that we in the public have on this project. But clearly, I, I am going to say this. There was a project a long time ago that was in my neighborhood. And it was an accessory building, and it was about 1,600 square feet. And it was labeled that it had two bedrooms, and oh, oh, was it an art studio? There was a closet connected to that art studio. There was even a bathroom connected to that art studio. So this building was really three rooms and three bathrooms. Two were labeled bedrooms, and the third one an art studio. And a former town board member said, if it looks like a duck, it's a duck. And I am going to just say that tonight, that that den and office on the second story of this building looks like a duck. It's a bedroom. It's not a den. It's an office. This building can house eight to 10 people. This is not an accessory structure to any primary dwelling. And it absolutely is a house. It is still a kitchenette, which means there are kitchen facilities, makes it an apartment, not allowed in the nearshore overlay district. And, and I will just simply say that this application needs to be denied as presented to you tonight. And any of the new documents I would request that Matt Sherman presented today be posted on the website in conjunction with this application for further review, should you choose to continue the hearing and adjourn this one.
They are posted.
Okay, thank you very much, Christina. You know how I am about that. But yes, further review on your part, I think, is necessary. And, and I understand that you folks are, you know, I'm going to say new at doing wetlands applications. This is a very large wetlands application as your first one, and it's quite a challenge. I, I, I suggest that you just move slowly, carefully, diligently, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else? I can say a couple of quick things here. The, just to the, the point of whether the property owners were going after Ian in order to try and have an easier path through the wetlands permit process when they engaged Ian last, I think it was August or September, this would have been in front of the town board. We tried to get it in front of the town board before it got transferred over to the planning board because of that appearance of impropriety or, or, not impropriety, but a conflict of interest. And the timing just didn't allow it to happen. So a lot of effort was made in order to, to directly avoid that appearance. And then when it was clear that that appearance could not be avoided, the ethics committee was brought in to make sure that everyone was on board, that, that this was okay to move forward the way that it was moving forward. The other thing was on the, Kimberly had brought up the short environmental assessment form that was submitted as part of the original application because it had gone to the town board for review. And the town board required those on every wetlands applications, whereas the planning board does not require them just out of the gate. If it becomes apparent that it's required, they'll, you'll, you'll ask for it. That's what the new policy is. The, I wasn't, it, it, it's not really an, a, a important part of this application, but because Kimberly did mention that there was a perceived error on that short environmental assessment form, it had to do with the easement, there being an easement on the property. We did do the easement search on the deed, and there is no easement for Willow Path on this property. So does it mean that when everything was first developed way back when, that there wasn't some kind of an informal agreement or a general understood agreement, but there is no easement for Willow Path on this property? So I don't know how many other properties don't have easements for paths or different improvements, but that was the point of contention and question, and we made sure that, that, that answer on that short environmental and short environmental assessment form was indeed correct. So just a, a point of clarification. And based on that, and the information that we've provided, the information that the neighbors have provided, I do request that the board close the hearing, except for written correspondence. I'm more than happy to get you whatever information you'd like, whether it's, you know, a different supporting information, flood zone information, whether we need to do a FEMA permit, that'll be with the building department if we get that far. So there's a lot of other information that can come out either in the short term, or if approved by this board in the long run, when we're going through the, the building permit process. No, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
I just would love to say, I'd like to say one more thing, please. If a FEMA permit's required, then there's going to have to be coordinated review. At least if you do seeker, which you should.
Okay. Stella?
Guys, I know you're tired. We're all tired, so I'm going to make this very quick. Stella Rigudis, sorry, General Manager of the Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corp. And a lot of times when people look at deeds, or you do a title search, sometimes they only go back 50 years or so. There is a deed that does show that this is an easement, a perpetual right of access easement for all Shelter Island Heights members and their guests, and I'd be happy to submit that to you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? What do you want to do? It feels like there's a bunch of those. It seems like, I think we had a lot of open conversations through this in the last two months. It seems to be, I think everybody's had their say. Are we still writing a bunch of stuff? I think having more written things coming in would be fine. I think we've had enough meetings to move forward. It might, might get so we could spend some time discussing and working through it, in my opinion.
Also, just some of the comments about it not being a type two, and I want to hear from our town.
I'm happy to, to look into it again and, and, you know, provide the board with follow-up opinions.
And then the other comment was about the FEMA, FEMA review. So Matt, you were going to.
Sorry?
FEMA?
I, depending on, if the board want.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Busted myself. If the board wants me to do a more in-depth review for FEMA, there's really not much I can do, but I can give you a narrative based on the grading. You know, the, there's, it, it's just not, you know, we can do, if it's required, we can do another short environmental assessment form. If you'd like it, we can do another, we can do a full environmental assessment form. I don't want to do it if it's not a requirement, but if it is a requirement and it helps in your decision, we'd be more than happy to add any of that information that you would like.
And then there's one other thing I want. In terms of the other comment also that was made by Kimberly and one other speaker, that we should consider deferring it to, to the ZBA. Our council had indicated several times, and we keep going back and forth about this, that that's not within our jurisdiction. So again, after you said that, again, the audience, we heard the same, you know.
I think I would like the opportunity to review.
And that's what I'm thinking. Okay.
Okay.
So those are two things for me.
Does that create a situation where we're closing it or adjourning it, if you're going to continue to review?
You can close the public hearing itself, but leave the written record open for comments.
Just, I just wanted clarification on that. Okay. You can do that. Yeah, I, I think there should be more written, certainly, and there should be more review on, on your end to, to either support or refute everything we just heard definitively. Because we have to get to a point where we make a decision.
Well, aren't you, aren't you possibly going to have questions once we submit comments? And once the FEMA issue, we don't know that we have, we're lacking FEMA information. So wouldn't it be better to, to adjourning this for now, until you have that information and the comments?
Matt, wouldn't the FEMA issue be more in the wheelhouse of the building department?
No.
Yes, I believe so. If, well, typically, the way that I've experienced it is the building department will issue the referral, and then we'll take it from there. Whether it's a referral to the planning board, or if they, they believe there's FEMA issues, if there's DEC issues, things like that, a lot of that, well, you know, we know ahead of time and will take preemptive steps.
Please leave this open, and please keep an open mind.
I can also request you, you adjourn it also so we can look at the look at the legal allowances provided by council and just comment on it briefly. I mean, I think that's the better, the number of questions really are unresolved, so I'd ask you to adjourn the meeting, adjourn the meeting pending submission of of your requested uh.
Well, Marcus, since we have gone back on these three issues and we are seeking clarification, maybe we should adjourn it then, so this way they can they can hear the answer, the final answer, once we do the research. How do you both, uh, three of you, sorry?
I think that to to properly put it to bed, there needs to be more discussion. I would say we should adjourn it. I mean, I I think everyone has, including the homeowner, everybody has, there's still so many unanswered questions that that were just brought up.
The thing is, is that this is wetlands, you know, which is we do, which is chapter one twenty-nine. That's 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 what. And so if you look at this application, there's nothing wrong with it. Everything is outside of seventy-five, you know. I mean, it's pushing it, but it's right there. It's all legal.
Yeah, as far as, that's the thing about it, is the, I mentioned this, this part was to push back and make it a bigger issue, but in theory, that's what the process is for going through the building department, for doing the wetlands portion versus because it was determined there was no zoning deeds, there was no zoning deeds. And so I think it's reasonable for us to look into, see if referrals make sense, if there's any other FEMA issues. Uh, but I also think that can all be done in written word, which actually, I think, is a much clearer than just hearing same iteration of the same issues over and over in my opinion. So I I don't, unless there's a belief that suddenly out of this, we're gonna put a new issue. I would hope, I would hope all the issues have been laid out. I think we understand that there's key questions we wanna go have answers to. It'd be nice to be able to go work on those versus not knowing next month what new issue's gonna be raised. And is it, correct me if I'm wrong, if we get, if we close in the written, and if we decide we want to reopen, we could reopen if we want to.
Correct.
Also, I will defer to the rest. We're all kind of deferring to each other.
To talk it out.
We have to be reopened.
Yeah.
We noticed.
I I still.
That's the only thing is just keep in mind that if it does, if you do decide, if you go through that app and you decide to reopen, it would be another notification.
It will postpone another month.
Adjourned it. Yes. Because I think there's, I think there's a high risk that we would end up having something. So knowing that, let's save us all.
One more round.
Okay.
Let's sit around and adjourn.
Cool. Thank you for that information. That helps.
Christina, she needs to go.
Sorry, Matt.
No, it's like. So are you gonna, we're gonna move to adjourn?
Sure.
I'll second it.
To the next meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn right now, not close.
State which, correct.
Adjourn to August.
That's it.
I think it's August fifteenth, right?
Right.
If that's up, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Audrey?
Yep.
Anne?
Oh, we invite Anne back in?
Yes.
Okay, I.
He's not asleep. I know I would be. Yeah. Yeah. Wait till that happens. Okay. So that closes the business meeting. Next, our current applications. We have the Bloom Minor Subdivision, which we just extended uh into January, extending their final application deadline to January. Just extended SH twenty-nine Westlake LLC Lot Line Adjustment for forty-five days. Uh, similarly, we extended the white roadway construction by forty-five days. We do have a new application in front of us. We just received, I believe, last week for Six Daniel Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC. Um, I believe Mr. Wagner is here, and uh, please introduce us to the project.
Good evening, members of the board. John Wagner, Stilman Ballen, Heather and Hyman, Apog, actually, Applicanister, Lot Line Adjustment. So these are, there are two distinct parcels. Uh, one is the Roger Parcel, which is on Six Daniel Lord Road. It's a perfectly rectangular parcel in excess of twenty-five. Um, there's another parcel, that parcel on the road design, which is actually about three, filed subdivision that was approved. And uh, what we're hoping to do is adjust the lot line, those two parcels, um, a large portion of the uh Six Daniel Lord Road parcel, day over to join Three Borough Hall parcel. And a small portion of the uh of the Six Daniel Lord parcel, a small portion of the Three Borough Hall parcel, the best we saw roughly point four of an acre, uh, joining the Six Daniel Road parcel. Uh, so is it this plan going both ways? A part of it is going in the existing parcel. It's probably larger, but in grand scheme of things, it's still rather small compared to the Six Daniel Road parcel. We're doing the parcel, it's two lots involved, lot lines are changing here and there. It's a little complicated because this piece is going back and forth, but, you know, I I try to give you a various different survey things so you can figure it out, you know, when you take the totality of all those things and and spread them out on the table as I do. Figure it out. Joe and Marty contacted me this week, some specific questions about acreage. I gave him some additional information. Um, I suspect that there may be more to discuss between him and me, and uh, so I'm open to having more discussions with you, Joe. Uh, I have I have some additional information too that I got from the surveyor just today. So I would I would share every, I think I can clarify everything that you were asking me.
Okay. Joe, um, can you briefly ask, uh, tell us what the questions were you have, just so we're up to speed, because we haven't heard about this before? I printed out all of the maps that had been submitted, and there were quite a few maps that weren't submitted. And and noticed that it was not a map that showed the entire portion of what the Daniel Lord Road parcel in in its entirety. Everything had to do with, but even that, I believe, shows lot line modification. Yeah. And if you look at the the southerly end of the Borough Hall parcel, there's no bearing in distance um along that that would show what was. That would show what was the uh the line between Borough Hall and Daniel Lord Parcels. So I asked for some additional information on that. That was provided, but in addition to that, I asked for, they had submitted a survey of Borough Hall Lot, but there wasn't a survey for. Okay. The other lot. So I asked that that survey be provided, and I got that yesterday. Great. Um, so I have not had a chance to go through everything, you know, looking at rough some rough numbers, and I I hope that the additional information we're going to provide will will uh address some of the issues, because the numbers didn't add up for me. It was about a tenth of a acre less than it should be.
It's complicated to explain why that happened, but it has to do with two different surveys.
Okay. Say no more. Yeah. That's enough. Yes. Yeah. So it sounds like you're still working on thickness, making sure that we have, before we really dive into it. Right. And, you know, one question I haven't brought up now is, here is this parcel of land that's fifteen point one feet wide, and is is that included in this application, or is it not?
Yeah, this this is something I I I need to, I need to pull a couple of old pieces in here now. A surveyor at that fifteen-foot-wide parcel is something that was not included in the in the old survey, nineteen sixty-five survey of Six Daniel Lord Road. And when they did the subdivision, the Borough Hall subdivision, that was prepared by John Metzger, he, um, for reasons that I I'm not clear about, he decided to include that core in the Six Daniel Road parcel, as he depicted it on the filed subdivision map. So that's why there's a, you know, the two maps are inconsistent, the original survey of Six Daniel Road prepared by one surveyor and and the filed subdivision map prepared by another surveyor. Now, I found out today, when when you and I were talking about it, I went back and looked at the single and separate searches that we prepared for all of the parcels in the area, and I see that there was a uh, there was a correction deed issued for the uh property that was covered by the Borough Hall subdivision approximately a year after the map was filed, which is really quite intriguing. I'm gonna wait to see what happened there. But, you know, the the original, the original deed to the Borough Hall entity that did the subdivision was dated nineteen eighty-nine, and then the map was filed, I I correct myself, the map was filed, I believe, in nineteen ninety-one. And then ninety-two, there's a curious correction deed. So I I'm just dying to see what what happened here. Yeah. So that that could explain, you know, some of these discrepancies. We we will figure it out.
That fifteen-foot-wide script does show on, show up on the map of the revised Borough Hall parcel.
Yes, the uh.
So it just, can we, can we include it? You know, that's that's what.
The map, the map, the map is showing, the filed map is showing that script being included in the Six Daniel Road. Even though that parcel was surveyed in sixty-five, they're not included. I gotta figure out why that decision was made.
Okay.
Again, you know, surveyors make these decisions upon, you know, record information they're filed, so they're looking at. Might be able to recreate the thought process there.
Does it, does it help to have any historical knowledge of the people that were involved in in the um original subdivision?
Uh, it might, but I I will.
Just wondering, because I I think I might know an individual who was there.
Well, is John, if John Metzger's still practicing? I don't, I don't believe so.
His son Don has taken over. Don, unfortunately, had a had a stroke and is now backing down. He may still be a rep, but you could, one could reach out to Don potentially and ask uh him to contact his dad, or he may have in-house records that may help you out.
And I I can ask James Walsh as well. I mean, he's the one that's doing surveys for us now. I can ask him what he's got in his file that that caused him to indicate all of the side of that map. Because, you know, they're very careful about what they put on there. They don't want to do anything that's wrong. So, uh, you know, they 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 make notations where they make, and I think that's why he actually called it out on the map, was at fifteen feet. He wanted to point out that there was some, there was some discrepancies there, but the file map did include that in the Six Daniel Lord Road. So what he, what the survey decided to do, that's a bit way too far, I know, but what the survey decided to do was because the filed map indicated that that was part of the Six Daniel Road, uh, the after adjustment lots that were shown on the lot adjustment map, which we're saying to you now, includes that core in the Six Daniel Road. That's why you made that choice. So the acreages that are shown in the final product include that core in in the Six Daniel Road and include them in now that that area is going to be conveyed to Three Borough Hall. That's what become part of that lot.
There's areas of discrepancies. So maybe maybe getting it back in.
That's the one that will take the lot line. You're shifting stuff across the table.
Yeah.
But we'll, I guess, we'll figure it out. I mean, I'm sure we can work this out.
The the just, the the map that you sent yesterday.
Yeah.
Which was for the Daniel Lord Road parcel, it shows that fifteen point one foot, it does not appear to be included.
That's, that's the issue, yeah. Apparently, what the surveyor told me today, it was the nineteen sixty-five, the Six Daniel Road Road, we told that for us, survey was done, and the survey uh did not indicate any core or anything. It just, it just showed the lot as ending for that core. It was staked out that way. John Metzger, when he did this filed subdivision map, came to a different conclusion. He thought that it should have gone farther and included it. So, you know, like I say, they they make judgment calls sometimes, and they're not always consistent. But, you know, the truth is there somewhere.
Close players.
And as a matter, it may turn out irrelevant because, you know, both parcels involved on either side of the core are involved in this area. So it'll be worked out one way or the other. Any other questions I can help you with now?
Anyway, the town, you get back its town landing.
That's not part of our application.
Hey, man, just checking out. We'd love to have that.
I'm sure you would.
Good response.
By by the way, Joe, just just so you know, the uh, as I pointed out to you, the all the current improvements on the Six Daniel Road Road are shown on, and the entire lot on Six Daniel Road Road is shown on the lot adjustment map. That's why I I thought that was, you know, complete information at the time we submitted that. But I gave you the other one, you know, for your edification too.
Okay. So, Joe, do you think you have enough to put together a memo, a memo for us? I can have something ready for you for the next meeting. You can provide any additional information on that fifteen-foot.
Yeah, I'm gonna start with the deeds. I'm gonna start there. We're just talking with the deeds.
Awesome.
Okay.
Anything else we, you want us to know about this right now, or?
Uh, I think that's it. I mean, I I think if we could just get the line straight, I think it's a pretty straightforward application.
It does look straightforward.
We'd like to, you know, we'd like to, obviously, like most adjustments, I'd like to move it as quick as possible, but we have to ask the questions.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
we haven't fully discussed it yet. We had the public hearing on the CAM last month, but um, I asked Beth to put together a resolution, two things, because this is a different style, like the run by us than the town board resolutions, and um, I can let her speak a little bit about that. And second, well, I think this is a fairly straightforward application. We can um also discuss the new information submitted by Matt, vegetation plan, and square footages. But um, Beth, would you like us to discuss the new submissions first before we discuss the form of the?
Yes.
Okay. So Matt, do you want to discuss this, or should we just?
I'd like to keep quiet.
Okay. Okay. Fair?
I'll agree.
Fair? I think the only thing we were talking about were a potential discrepancy in square footages on the house, which could have potentially been done about how it was measured, whether they were interior walls or exterior walls. And I know as an architect, I typically measure to exterior structure, but in my discussions with the building department, they measured to interior wall surface. So it's a different style and quickly get a miss a part of you square feet. I don't know. I haven't looked in detail at the new sheets, but I think the the information is the same as last time. Or you didn't happen to look at the new new drawings, did you?
No, I haven't.
Matt, do you want? I know you don't want to talk.
The hearing's closed. Hearing's closed. You cannot take testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry. The hearing's closed. I'm not allowed to ask you questions. My mistake. I apologize. But I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, we weren't really concerned, the numbers weren't so much of a discrepancy.
Well, I think the question is too, that in this situation, you you want to make sure that the numbers reflect what would be in the decision. So that's why I think this process of seeing what the decision's going to look like, and now the board discussing, to know that when I'm sitting in front of my computer trying to draft this decision, I'll have a format now set up. However, I'm going to need to be able to put in the specific relief requested and all of that information, all any of the conditions that are going to be required, and, you know, what the criteria is for the board when they're reviewing an wetlands permit application, what specific requirements and criteria that the code requires that you look at and make a determination on whether, when you're going to a permit or view an application. And then, you know, the board would have findings within its determination as to why it specifically feels that the application before it meets the criteria that are set forth in the code. And then we would approve specific plans, and then whatever conditions of the approval, the mitigation factors that are required, the construction requirements, all of those things would be included within the conditions of approval, including timelines. There are certain timelines in the code. There's the requirement now that there there be an environmental consultant, someone goes and checks the revegetations and the buffers and things like that. And so those are all included as conditions of approval. So all of this information, when the board has a discussion, is things that I would be writing down for myself for later, when I'm drafting your resolution, determination, that then it would be in the determination. So that's why I feel like it's it's good for the board to see the form and make sure that all of our information is correct, because the last thing you want is for some wrong information here, and then an applicant have to come back for a modification to change things, and it just sets people back. So I think that's why it's important when the board's going through an application, making a determination, that we make sure that, you know, okay, we've got, you know, what are they specifically asking for? Has it changed since it was noticed? You know, are we looking at the right plans? What are the specific plans that the board's approving? These, all these things make make my job drafting your resolution easier, and also in the end for the applicants, not having to come back to get things changed, or if there's errors or things like that. And then I think it just helps everything smoother. And also, the board, I think, can focus on what they're supposed to be looking at when they're reviewing an application.
Do you like the format?
Yeah, I read through the format. I thought it was very good. Thank you. And it reads simply.
Yeah. And I think it's also it's streamlined, you know, it makes it for drafting purposes, it makes it easier, because I know this has to go here, this has to go here, this has to go here. And then all the decisions look the same. So people know, the board knows, the the building department knows, Joe knows, whoever is looking at these determinations will know that, okay, the conditions, I know where the conditions are. The conditions are in the back. Here's the list of, when the building inspector is reviewing whether now we can issue the CO, if it's CO, he can say, no, I can't issue the CO yet because you haven't complied with the boards, the planning board's decision HA or HB, you know, these need to be complied with before. It just makes it more administratively, I think it makes it easier.
As as what was discussed last month, there were a whole bunch of bullets that we ran through in the presentation, including the, I think we had a, for the removal of the asphalt driveway, replacement with gravel, you have it in there. The putting in the dry wells that was proposed, I'd like to ensure that the required pool dry wells in there too. I know the pool's relatively new, so I assume it has it. I didn't, I don't think I saw it on the drawings. And the existing cabana, whether that has dry wells. There seemed to be some above-surface corrugated piping, you know, the the black piping that led to in some direction, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure that there was a dry well. But I I think you have that in the report, that that has to be part of it. Without, the installation of the five-gallon well that was offered is in there, the removal of the cesspool, the installation of the Fuji clean outside the regulated is in there. So I think all the points were were included. We received the vegetation plan, and it's very good. It gives items all the way across the whole property. We're obviously most concerned about the non-turf buffer material. And the only thing I would ask as similar to I asked to the to the carpes was quantities, eighteen inches apart, but other things are twenty-four inches apart. So I don't know thirty inches apart. I I don't know, are we looking at twenty plants or forty plants? And what do, you know, and what's the density of each if there's one, two, three, four, five, six plants? And again, I don't care about the foundation plantings, the front plantings, and and the border plantings, it's a nice design. I'm just really interested in kind of an idea on the density of of, just because we have to qualify it somehow so that the environmentals can look at it in future and say this was done. Again, that's my personal opinion.
Is there like a, founders, like, is there something we're looking for specifically? Is it quantity or the, you know, density or like you say you want to have these numbers, but?
I don't know how these plants install in there. I don't know enough about the plants. I can check against the CAC's list.
Yep.
But I can't really say. So some spike grass, eighteen inches apart. But is that intermixed with all this other stuff, or is there areas spike grass that will have twenty plants in it, say? For me, it's easier to, I have some idea of numbers. If it was all one plant, and it said eighteen inches apart, then I'd understand it.
It was a little more clear on Carpe, but it didn't have, Carpe didn't have.
Carpe, you could actually count the different plants, because they use different standards.
Yeah. But we weren't even sure if that was really.
No, we know, but at least.
Was that really the actual plant? So that's sort of like a drawing of what it is.
Something like that that would represent the actual thing.
I guess the question I would have is, is kind of back at the one, what's the goal here? Which is like, the goal here is to make sure that we have minimal impact to water, right? So it's like, is that something for us or for the, is there a goal that we want to tell our environmentals that we're trying to achieve? Or is it, I'm trying to figure out, how do you determine?
So it doesn't, the slope on the on the property isn't that severe. The idea is that these non-turf buffers prevent water flow better than turf, but we all know that turf actually does pretend protect water flow to a certain degree. Again, the idea for me was not ripping out the turf and putting in a new bed, it was just planting these materials within the zone. And they were nice enough to offer fifteen to twenty feet, which is a nice, nice buffer on top of the already non-turf vegetated bluff. So I'm happy with the concept. I am just, I, we've been asking others to quantify, and that's.
That's what I'm, yeah. I try and. Achieve the goal we want, right? Which I think the main thing is one environmental, the whole idea is somebody's going to go look and see if they achieve the goal, which is then what is the goal? Like, well, plants or it's a goal is like to reduce runoff by this much? That's, I just don't understand.
And so I don't think we even have enough science for that, to be honest with you. And so.
Well, I I will say in past boards that I've advised, that there is usually a, there would be an environmental consultant that would review the revegetation plan prior to the board making its determination. Or in an alternative, it could be a situation where the board would condition the review, you know, that would condition that the applicant submit a revegetation plan to be approved by the board's environmental consultant prior, you know, to issuance of a building permit or something like that. But ideally, you would want it reviewed.
In the transfer.
Before.
In the transfer process with the dialogue we had at the town board, there was a real hesitancy. I know Stella Gudis stood up and said, we don't want to spend, we don't see these things get really expensive and spend a lot of money. And I agree with the town board didn't have an environmental examiner. They just took the applicant's word. And then I've been to other projects twenty years ago, and I saw a whole bunch of wood chips and three or four plants, and they called that their vegetable buffer. They would have done better just leaving in the turf grass. So we're slowly embodling into this, and we can't just demand of, we have to do a little bit in-house as we we get up to speed and find out what we're comfortable and what we need. I agree with you, in a perfect world, shelter on planning board, we even have an environmentalist on on retainer or in the in the in the planning board, but they don't, we don't have that. And so the negotiation or the decision we made, town board and Stephen Kylie, was to bring in an environmentalist at the end to at least verify that what's installed is what it is. Because as Reed Karen says, and as I attest to, I don't know the difference with these plants. I know some plants, but I don't, but I even.
Couldn't the person that prepares the plan provide like a little statement to the applicant? They can give that to us, or they can read it, or they can bring it in, or in addition to like a like a little scheme?
So their design professional could, and I don't know if they brought in, if the architect did it himself, or if he brought in someone else.
Sometimes the architect can do it themselves.
I know. If they're a landscape architect too.
But I'm just saying, like, if 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 they're creating it and and we're getting this nice little key to read how many plants are actually there, could they also, could we require them to include their little blurb on how they came to that determination of thirty or it was a ten, or is it, and why is that? They could just put that in there. That would give us some kind of basis. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think the application, we had this conversation a year and a half, two years ago, the town board was asking, oh, let's just throw out, well, let's just make them put in a fifteen-foot buffer. And well, what's that fifteen foot based on? This is a fairly shallow, low sloping property. It's not a very steep one. And so I don't necessarily think a huge buffer is needed. They're kindly offering a fifteen.
They're offering more than all these necessary.
Then I would, you know, even think that's needed, and as part of their landscape activities. Also, the problems with putting plants in amongst existing turf, you can't mow the existing turf anymore. The existing grass is going to go up. So if they're putting in grasses, maybe that's sufficient to even just saying this list. I'm just talking so that we have a further conversation.
I think this is going to be ongoing and based upon, once we start working with the environment, we'll get better hopefully at it and learn more in the process. It's probably going to be.
Yeah.
Also, wasn't this the property where we noted the electricity?
Yeah.
So where, I noticed that wasn't in the final, the drafts that were.
Well, we can't because that's a utility.
It was, but but we did pass our recommendation that they look into, like, was that?
Well, they they agreed to do so.
Where, you know, it's pilings going across the property, feeding several houses. With their house, they can put it underground, they can't do the whole thing.
Right. I do.
So, so, I mean, I like the vegetarian plan. It gives material that I I agree with. They're, I'm happy that they're grasses and understanding they're trying to do what I've been suggesting, that maybe mixing grass with the existing fescues. And then the existing fescues grow up too. They're all kind of grasses at a certain height. And then maybe, I'm not so worried about the density if if they, you know, achieve twenty-four on center or at some kind of density as described.
So it sounds like.
Maybe I've come full circle.
It seems like this, in a sense, we seem to like what they've done, more than likely just expressing that they follow this plan as per dated block block. He's all we need, the legal thing, right? It's like.
Right.
So, for example, right now, it says, what's it say? The subject property shall be revegetated in accordance with the landscape plan L 101, provided, prepared by Lynch Isinger Design Architects, dated June twenty seventh. My birthday, by the way, twenty twenty-three.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. So that's how it would be listed. I mean, the other other way that we sometimes would put it is where I list approved site plan, approved building plan, I could put approved landscape plan, and then it would reference in here, it would just say, you know, in accordance with the approved landscape plan, so.
Well, I'm I'm comfortable with it. Now that I've talked my way through it.
Yeah.
With this plan as it is, and what they understand, it's grasses amongst turf grass that's going to build up against it. It's not like you can manicure it. We certainly don't want to put a planting bed in.
I think as as long as disturbed areas are planted and stabilized, so there's no runoff, there's no sedimentation, that's what you're looking for.
Right. That's what I'm trying to say, what's the goal, right?
This area is not disturbed at all.
Yeah.
Right. This is something we are disturbing to make.
For planting.
To plant it.
Or.
Theory. All right. So where where do we stand on this? Are you guys comfortable with the with the draft?
I don't, has the board seen the draft?
Actually, I sent it around here. We got it. It's all, it's all, it's all good. It's all.
Today.
Positive. It's all good progress.
It's like a little different than what the town board was doing, but I like this format. Like, I think it's easier to read for someone who's just out there reading.
More of a resolutions.
Yes, yes.
Whereas this kind of makes it more of a.
It's more reader.
Which was the goal, to make it easier to follow and reference, and for it to be more user-friendly after it's been adopted, and for the building department, and for the other people to be able to look at it and be able to reference and see and make it clear about what what needs to be done, what conditions need to be met before things can be issued, and just the process.
I just skimmed through Joe's memo regarding the square footages. And the discrepancy is four thousand six hundred and thirty square feet versus five thousand and forty square feet. If it was the five thousand forty square feet, then adding in the cabana puts it over six thousand square feet, which is a mortarium on right now. So as far as the wetland application goes, I'm content with what we've done and what we reviewed. But to me, it seems like these numbers will have to be squared up for the building department, which they were in the original letter pile. But I now, this is something that Joe's wanted. But I, now, this is something that Joe's pointed out. And I'm happy to move ahead on this. Just with the. Does that seem like a?
Well, checks and numbers is they may be different than what's in here.
Yeah.
I think we have to have the numbers absolutely correct before it can go.
Especially if it's going to go over the moratorium.
So the plan.
Can't do that.
This is an important number.
We're here looking at the wetlands, right? The building department's already looked at the square footage that they were provided.
So if we could say it's okay by, from a wetlands point of view, except the building department to determine what square footage is.
That's kind of what I'm saying. And our cover letter to the building department, just say, we noticed a discrepancy in these square footages. Just going to bring it to your attention.
So it's kind of like we use the number that might be incorrect, but that's what was given.
Well, we're using the number that's.
The number that was given. That was the.
That's how it was building department.
So it could be an error, but as far as what was given to us, okay. All right, I understand.
So the building department has four thousand five hundred eighty?
Let's see, what's in the letter? Nine eleven. Not here to stall, stall any project any further, but you're right, you got to get it.
Well, especially since Seth just emphasized that everything in the document should be accurate. You don't want to have people come back.
We began this before on summer, the square footage was slightly different. It's like.
That was one that you and I did.
Yeah.
The building inspector's denial letter has thousand five hundred and eighty. It's not a small one.
Yeah. So that's the same as what we. And so it's, you put this SFLA, sometimes it's.
Four five eight, all right?
Yeah, four five eight is what.
That's what we looked at. And Joe, where did you use all the other numbers?
Coverage the different pieces. There was difference in the numbers that were reported on plans from Sherman Engineering and plans from the design architects.
Here are the plans from the design architects. These were reported on that page. So they have living area in the basement at fourteen sixty-five. And here they have the basement at one oh nine oh.
Here's fourteen sixty.
Oh, sorry, fourteen sixty. Oh, this is Joe pointing this out.
Oh.
Going to the.
And what's the date on that drawing?
The plans I'm looking at are twenty eighth September, twenty twenty-two. And this is what.
That's not the last one we submitted. We submitted one, I should say, have a revision of June seventh, twenty twenty-three. That's when we submitted that.
That's what I thought, you did submit extra. I just don't. I haven't yet. I got that application.
It's got my first pages revised June thirty.
Do you have a copy with you?
Yes, this one.
So it's there? I'm looking, I'm looking at this one. See, architects' plans for building area calculations. It says right here, this is lot coverage. These aren't the actual floor plans. This is the.
This is lot coverage. Yeah, that's just.
That one's got a lot covered. We can also have the new architect.
I'm not.
Oh, this. The landscape. No, is there any factors that I should be tracking around with that?
On the, on the.
Was it separate?
Submission package you sent us, there were architects' plans. What? I didn't look at them differently and we don't have a paper copy, so to speak. I don't.
It's kind of like seven eighty-seven.
Do you have access to them?
I may have. I don't see anything different.
Just the numbers.
Yeah, Matt, you didn't submit this paper. Submit the, the response has a five pages in a PDF, but you submitted only the first page and the last page in the printed version.
Yeah, you should have one that's June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
I'll have to get that, print them up and give them to you.
Okay.
Basically, what it does is it just lines up all those numbers. It's a two and a half.
So it sounds like we need those numbers to move ahead.
Do we want to go through and do it, make sure all the rest is good? And then hopefully then all it is the number issue? Would that be worthwhile?
Well, I think the board could review as far as looking at the criteria of the permit and stating why they feel that this application meets those criteria set forth in the code. You can actually find the criteria in the decision itself. It's an F. Yep. And so the board could have that discussion.
Basically, this is saying we believe all these things to be true.
So the first one is the proposed action and location will not create a risk of impairing the function and value of the wetlands in buffer. Putting in drywells.
Seems like that seems true.
So, I mean, it seems like it meets all the proposed criteria of the town code. The proposed project will not diminish any wetland in size unless the approving authority finds that the proposed activity is water dependent or requires access to the wetlands as an essential element of its basic function and will result in the minimum possible alteration or impairment of wetlands. We don't find them, we don't break the sense of. And we're reduced, it actually reduces the, reduces its like.
Yeah. Just a question, I'm looking at. On the landscape plan, so that's looking at the site plan here. I just wanted to make sure that there was access to that existing dock.
There is.
It'd be provided through the revegetated area.
Yeah, code allows, town code allows a five-foot pathway. The proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quantity and quality of the groundwater. We're putting in an IOA system, removing the, moving the cesspool near the buffer, putting in drywells. The project does not create the net increase of risk of runoff. The drywells, water collection and drywall mitigate that. In addition, the vegetative buffer mitigates that.
Driveway, right? Isn't the driveway?
The driveway being removed and putting it as gravel, that mitigates it too. Again, I think, again, it's about the gravel being clean gravel as for the driveway instead of, you know, RCA. The applicant has demonstrated that there are no practical alternatives for the project to be constructed outside the regulated area. Pushing it back pushes into the existing swimming pool and patio and, excuse me, deck. So I don't, and.
We're actually reducing the amount.
And we've always agreed that you're allowed to construct in the adjacent regulated area. But. The applicant has submitted information to describe alternative site locations and configurations sufficient for a determination that the proposed work and location would have a less adverse environmental impact. I don't think we really even see that it has a lot of environmental impact. And again, pushing it back is not really. The conditions in this are the wireback sill fencing in, and there until the disturbed areas are stabilized. The IA system for the health department, the low-flow pump, which they've agreed to, five gallons per minute, which makes sense. The drywells and for the cabana and the pool, if the pool isn't in there ready. Water previous gravel for the driveway, the vegetation plan. The permit can be valid for two years. And then the clause about the town's environmental consultant, after the plants are installed before they close out the permit. I think those are the typical, all the conditions that we really discussed. I don't think there's anything else anyone wanted. So I think we're good to go, in my opinion, if we just clarify the square footages.
Yeah. I'll send you an eight-part copy.
Thank you. Okay. Carpe we left open, so we're not going to discuss. Hills Tam, we just got the new revised application, so it's no longer on hold. But Matt, quickly, is that, is the, is the application changed significantly from the first one?
Not from a wetlands point of view. The building got shorter, went from two stories to one story. The general orientation and footprint is fairly much the same, except it extended on the wings of the building. So it got a little bit longer and it got shorter. It's still in the same orientation to the wetlands boundary as it was. They're looking to take out part of the existing bulkhead. They were going to go down to about a two-foot elevation with the new beachfront. But they're only going down to about a five-foot elevation so that we know where the wetland boundary will end up being on that new lower wall.
And that's all delineated then?
Yeah. The lion's share of the application should be fairly consistent with what you're talking about.
Okay. Joe, when you have a moment, we're just going to ask you to take a look at that application.
Yes.
Thank you.
So it should continue because I need a new.
Get out of my room. Do you keep it open? Did you close it? Okay. Weinstein Hensley, we're not, we're, we're going to do that next time. We do have a new application. Dawson and Diamond and Joe, you put together a quick memo. Did you want to go through the key points on this one?
Sure. Essentially, the application is for a fifteen by fifteen foot addition for appears to be a bathroom. Seems it's one story. The, underneath that addition, there'll be a storage area. Kind of like a basement. The one question I had is I didn't see like a finished floor elevation for the, at lower level. And I just want to make sure we have groundwater situation. Want to make sure that no de-watering is required. If we can get some additional admission on that.
The town, unless they addressed it, they still permit de-watering for plan foundations. But you need a plan for it. So if there is de-watering being proposed, we need to know the conditions around the de-watering.
Right now, it's not being proposed, but we don't know if they need it or not.
Okay.
That was a question that I have.
Okay.
Because it seems like the bottom of that.
The six inches or a foot above the.
Above.
Yeah. And we know the water table goes up and down slightly, so I guess that's a good question.
In addition to that, besides the addition, there's an existing studio on the property and a deck and steps. According to the building department, they were built without benefit of a permit. And they also are in the adjacent regulated area. And they don't meet side yard setback for existing restructures. So the idea is to relocate that studio to a conforming location and it will be outside of the ARA. They're also replacing the conventional sanitary system with an IA system. They have approvals from both the health department and the DEC. They actually have a permit for the DEC and then a modification, modification. And permit was for the original addition. Modification is for the studio relocation.
Okay, I saw both in there.
Yeah. And that's about it. Application is complete.
Who wants to take this on? I need two plan board numbers. Marcus? I have a second.
Okay. Joe, you got two. Do I have one?
Yeah, you got one, two.
Get those right.
All ones.
Oh, we did those right.
I don't know, Matt, I don't know if we need to look at one sixty-nine again, but.
We probably do. We need to at least look at the new.
New updates.
New updates. The problem is I can't get to the, I can't get to the paperwork. So I'm off island during business hours.
I can pick it up for you, LB.
Yeah, even in the evening, you should just, you know, let me know.
Okay.
I don't, there are various meetings scheduled throughout the evening. So I'm happy to, you know, coordinate, even if I'm not here with the.
I was aware that was an option.
Yeah.
That's your special.
Going back to Dawson, Diamond, just to finish up there. We forwarded to the CAC. And so we should probably, instead of scheduling the public hearing now, wait for their report. And so we'll schedule it next time.
Yeah, so we'll get ahead of it.
And they should discuss it next meeting, next week.
You guys had enough for tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion to adjourn the July eleventh planning board meeting.
Hold on to it if you like. Okay.
Hi.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. All righty. Ian? Sir?